Ready to go.
We are ready.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the August 11 City Council meeting. We're here in council chambers and we're starting at 5:30 because we're going to do an executive session before the actual regular meeting business. Roll call please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Mueller.
Present. Motion to excuse Councilmember Robert Brown for reasons known to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Meant by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to executive session. Is there a motion that council recessed from regular meeting and could be an executive session for the purposes going to be given to us by either the city manager or law director?
Mr. Mayor, yes, there is to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending court action.
Motion to go to executive session for that specific purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Meant by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
It's 5:32, we're going to go to executive session, then come out, close executive session, and then reopen the regular meeting. So, executive session.
The microphones are muted. One moment please.
The lights are high. One moment, please.
And we are back.
Okay. Your motion to counsel close executive session and reconvene to regular meeting.
Moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Rule call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Knab?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Six zero.
Okay, we now continue the regular meeting. I just want to mention for those who are outside, there will be four public hearings. Ballot for tax budget, minor changes to the zoning ordinance, changes to zoning ordinance regarding schools and the Ross Township-Hamilton jet. Just so everybody's aware, based on recommendations from our health department, those recommendations are being followed about council being approximately three to six feet apart. City administration and chambers to sit safely separated and masked if they choose to. Members of the public, speaking to the audience of citizens, in public hearings will be escorted back and forth from the outside to the podium, back to being outside again. Please speak in direction of city council when you do speak, either audience of citizens or to public hearing. And according to our recommendations, masks recommended to be worn outside, out in the lobby area. So, we're ready to go for offering the prayer by council member Tim Knab, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Let's get that started.
Lord, we gather this evening in the work of the city of Hamilton. Please continue to guide us in our decisions for all best possible outcomes as we purposely grow and remain attractive to residents and businesses in our 17 neighborhoods. Lord, thank you for the many blessings we are fortunate to witness in our city. Hamilton continues to grow and remains a wonderful place to live, work, and play, and raise our families. We ask you watch over and keep our public safety teams safe as they work to assist all people in our communities. As always, please keep our country's armed forces in harm's way as these brave men and women strive for freedom from oppression and all of world peace. Help guide all decision makers and administrations at federal, state, and local levels in all efforts to serve the people and jurisdictions in their care. We pray these petitions in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can make one announcement, if you could please adjust your microphones, you can speak closer to them for those that are in the lobby, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Daniel.
Will do. Okay, we now go into item number one, which is recognition of council member Rob Brown. We're ready to have that read into the record.
Resolution accepting the resignation of Rob Brown from the council of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, recognizing his leadership and contributions as a council member and directing council to fill the office vacancy.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Beer. Prior to any comments, I just want to read three paragraphs of this particular resolution. Whereas this council recognizes significant public contributions made by council member Robert Brown in the services of council member since January 3rd, 2010, including playing an integral role in the hiring of our current city manager, promoting the South Hamilton Crossing development, and bringing Spooky Nook Sports Complex to the city of Hamilton. And whereas, this council further recognizes the additional public service contributions made by council member Robert Brown, serving on various public boards, including the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments, supports to encourage low-income families through Architectural Design Review Board, as well as being a council liaison with Hamilton City Schools. And whereas after successfully serving three terms, council member Brown looks forward to spending time with his wife, children, grandchildren, and number six grandchild due in mid-September. So, council has had the resolution before. I just wanted to redose three particular paragraphs, and discussion right now about that resolution. Hearing none, rule call vote on that resolution.
Pullman?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Knab?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Six zero.
We now go to special presentations by city council or the city manager, proclamations for reports. And number two, we're going to put towards the end. Number three, we're not going to have this evening. So we go right to ARPA funds presentation by city manager Joshua Smith.
You are ready, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna let Daniel pull the presentation up so the people in the audience can follow along. As Daniel is pulling that up, I'll go ahead and start the presentation. So just quickly, what is ARPA? The American Rescue Plan Act is a $1.9 trillion federal aid package passed by Congress in March of 2021. Of that $1.9 trillion, $350 billion is going to state and local governments as part of the fiscal recovery fund. Just to provide some context, Butler County will receive $75 million. The city of Hamilton is scheduled to receive $33.6 million. Best practice items to consider when thinking through the ARPA funds. One, they said, this is from federal guidance, use dedicated grants and programs first whenever possible, meaning if there's other monies out there, use those before using ARPA funds. Save local fiscal recovery funds for gaps and priorities not eligible for other federal and state assistance programs. Assess government operations and community needs. Look for areas where funding has not been possible previously, and to focus on transformative and catalytic community projects with broad public need and support.
My apologies, there was an issue with accessing it. Since I'm not Aaron Hufford, I don't have a way to access the presentation.
Well, let me just share it with you to your email right now. How about that?
Perfect.
Okay, I just sent it to you. To finish up on the best practice items, use this one-time funding for one-time expenses. Obviously, if we try to put it into operations, it only fills a gap for one year, and it does not allow us, slide four. It does not allow us to obviously continue with that, and most importantly, align it with, line the funding with city council priorities. So where I focused on the city manager's recommendation, after a meeting with the executive team several times, having conversations with a large management team, was in conversations with council, trying to consolidate it into what I would consider four buckets of money. Public safety buildings, traffic and infrastructure, economic development, mental health- public safety buildings, traffic and infrastructure, economic development, mental health, and homeless. The first bucket, the public safety capital, is what I'm recommending with the most funds at $17.5 million. First, it would replace Station 26 in Lindenwald. Station 26 in Lindenwald was, the firehouse was constructed when the fire apparatus was still being pulled by horses. It is obviously a facility that is not modern and certainly needs improvements. In addition, the location of that particular firehouse, over the years, that from a response time perspective, has changed. But working with the fire department and our GIS departments, we believe that a better location would be somewhere in proximity to where our Public Works Garage is, the city garage on Route 4. So we are looking to see if we can find some property in that area. So that would be $4 million of that $17.5 million. And then $13.5 million has been earmarked for Hamilton Police Department headquarters and also relocating the municipal court out of the building that we're in right now into that police headquarters. Prior to my time, when the municipal courts was located at HPD headquarters, there was a fairly substantial cost savings in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars a year because we did not need as many court security because they were already inside of a police department as we do at this location. And we believe that in combination with that, operating savings, that $13.5 million would get us approximately 35% to 45% of the way to constructing this facility. We would still have to build a more complete capital stack to get this project moving, but $13.5 million certainly gets us a good head start, and it also releases funding for architecture and planning-type services that would go with this. The police department already, or the city already owns property in Hanover, very close to the Butler County Sheriff's Office and jail, and that's a further operational savings in terms of transporting prisoners to and from court arraignment. So there's certainly a lot of operating costs, operating savings that would go along with this, and it gets HPD out of an old Kroger's building that has many physical challenges and puts them into a more modern facility. So public safety capital at $17.5 million. The is what we call traffic/infrastructure. I'll start with stormwater. We're asking for $2.5 million for stormwater. The Corwin Avenue project, we accelerated that project by several years due to the significant amount of complaints we received from area residents. And instead of borrowing for that money, I would prefer to just take $2.5 million out of the ARPA funds, and that saves us on interest costs. Also, there would be some money left over in that because of the street levy. We're doing more streets than we typically would. Almost every street that we're working on has a stormwater component to it, so that would also help us keep pace with doing additional streets. The $7 million for North Hamilton Crossing, we believe that would be approximately 10% of the construction price. We're still working with StanTech and some other civil engineers on the location of a North Hamilton Crossing. Early indications are it would be somewhat close to the Black Street Bridge to the north, and it would come across close to the existing Kim Dine location. The goal with the North Hamilton Crossing construction would be to not only span the river, but also to span the railroad tracks. It makes no sense to build a bridge and get it just across the river when the train tracks are literally another impediment. This would allow people that live in the north and northwest side of Hamilton to get across the river, across the train tracks, and get to either Route 4 or State Route 129 much more quickly. And I think as we've all have witnessed, the amount of traffic on High Street and Main Street, especially with B Street being closed right now, is significant. Our engineers, weirdly enough, are very optimistic that this can be under construction in the next seven to 10 years, and I think that that should be our goal. It should be to press this issue as fast as we can. Part of that, I just want to make sure that this is clear to council, part of that, under the $7 million for North Hamilton Crossing, is I would like, because it's not going to be under construction in the next five years, I would like to restrict that $7 million for a debt service account, a protection account, if you will, just for the uncertainty that's been going on with COVID and what's been happening with revenues. This would go to a debt service reserve account. It would be placed on, it would be restricted funds on the city's balance sheet, and assuming that we don't need to spend it for anything during that 60-month period, at the end of 60 months, it would automatically be swept into a special account that would be solely used for North Hamilton Crossing construction. So this was, I think the city of Cincinnati set aside well over $100 million for this type of purpose. I think that if we set aside $7 million, that this is a good enough amount of money. We have Spooky Nook under construction. You know, we've been very fortunate in the fact that they have come through a pandemic, they've come through a steel building collapse, they've come through a lot. They're still moving forward. But we are partners on the infrastructure side of that project, that I just think that it would be prudent to put that money on the balance sheet as restricted for five years, and then at the end of five years, it'd be automatically placed into a construction account solely for the purpose of constructing North Hamilton Crossing. The third bucket, I'm just generally calling it economic development. It includes $4.5 million for catalytic projects, $1.1 million for improvements at River's Edge, and $1 million for improvements to the building that we're in. Let me just spend a moment on the last two. The $1.1 million improvements at River's Edge primarily would be used to rebuild the roof. When River's Edge was constructed, I think some of you are aware of this, it was an amphitheater, but it was, the grant that we received from the DOT was really a bike trail perspective, and it was an area for people to congregate and to get on and off the bike trail. The amphitheater, I'm not going to say was of a secondary concern, but I don't think anyone envisioned we would be operating it in the fashion that we have since it's been operating. And one of the issues that we have is that the roof is constructed allows pretty significant water penetration during rain events, which restricts the ability to use certain electronics. Obviously, if it's raining too hard, in the past, we've actually relocated the concerts to under the McDougal and parking garage. That's generated complaints for people that live in the historic Mercantile Lofts for having loud noise. But this is from an economic development generator. I mean, I would, I would suggest to council that River's Edge has been one of the biggest that we have seen in terms of bringing people from outside the community in. And as we've witnessed in the last maybe six months, there's been significant investments in both Company 10/Newport and downtown Cincinnati for new outdoor concert venues. So I think this is a, I mean, $1.1 million is serious money, but I think it is a necessary step to make sure that we can maintain concerts there. The $1 million in improvements to 345 High Street, as we have become a multi-tenanted office building, and we have 80 acres on Floor 7, and we have ODW Logistics currently finishing their build-out on Floor 5, they're already on Floor 6, that most of that money would be used to replace the chillers that are 20-plus years old. The rest of the money, which I'm estimating to be in the $50,000 range, would be to improve the customer experience as they come into the lobby. Right now, you're coming into a multi-tenant office building, and unless you know what you're doing, it's very difficult to find the right department, to understand how to, which side is the county, which side is the city, how to get a birth or death certificate, how to pay a fine. So there are things that we know that are generating pretty significant customer foot traffic, and we think with $50,000 and working with Tommy Long from Lemon Grenade Creative, that we can create an entity on this level that will not only act as a better customer service experience, but it will also streamline when people are coming for delivery, to visit 80 Acres, to visit ODW Logistics, et cetera. The $4.5 million for catalytic projects, in my mind, that's money that we set to the side and we use for a project that we can leverage some money that would generate at least on a ratio of, call it $1.5 million to $10 million in leverage dollars. One of those, the best example I can give you right now is the conversation we had at the last council meeting about Schuler-Binninghoffen Mill. If the city had to invest $1.5 million in exchange for a 20-plus million dollar adaptive reuse investment that would be catalytic for Lindenwald, that is how I envision this money being used. You know, three, maybe four projects if we're lucky, but these could be very, very large, significant projects in our community. Finally, the last bucket was mental health and homelessness, and we've had several conversations with Butler County on this issue. I know that Butler County recognizes that, that mental health and homeless is an issue that transcends our corporate limits, and it's across the entire county. And as they work through their ARPA process, we plan to work with them and see how we can work with the county to get significant funding, not only in Hamilton, but in other parts of the county, so that when we attack the homeless issue and the mental health issue a little bit more directly, it's just not consolidated in Hamilton, but it's spread across the entire county footprint. And that is staff's recommendation. I'm happy to address any questions or comments regarding this presentation.
Questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Joshua, just for clarification, is there profit from River's Edge, the concerts? Does it generate money, or is it a break-even community-type thing?
So it, they do have surplus funds most years, not every year. Those funds are held at the Hamilton Community Foundation because they are the fiscal agent for River's Edge. So as a nonprofit, the money can only go back into the organization. So last year, they end up losing money because of COVID. Their primary revenue source, I mean, they do sell some tickets for bigger ticketed concerts, but their primary revenue source is the sales of beer, and that is what replenishes their fund, and that's how they pay the different acts that come in. So, I hate to say it like this, but that's why they recruit the acts they do, because it's your beer-drinking crowds, which will replenish the money and keep the concert series moving forward.
Okay. And then a second question, if I can. So, all of this, we get half of it over a two-year period. So everything we're seeing here would be cut in half, first year, second year, correct?
Yes. I mean, it could be, some of it could be all this year. For example, we received a funds of over, what, 16 point?
16 point.
$16.8 million that we have already deposited. So as council deliberates on this at future meetings, then if, for an example, a public safety building will not be built in the next couple of years. Fire Station 26, I think we can move pretty quickly on that, and I would recommend that would be something that we move on. The $2.5 million for Storm, I think that's an immediate need because if we don't do something quickly, it's going to be a situation where we need to borrow that money. The catalytic projects, the first one, the only one that is currently on my radar that is close to completion could be the Schuler-Binninghoffen. So that would be $1.5 million there. But yeah, I, it would be, we would have to stage the money, understanding that we only currently have that $16.8 million right now.
Right. And these are in no specific order? Like, this isn't number one priority, number two, number three? We'll take it as we believe they would need to be done?
Yes. The only thing that I would say that I think is a high priority right now is the $2.5 million for Storm Sewer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. With this list, I hope we discuss to have a special meeting to discuss this only. I think that would be extremely beneficial because this conversation could last 10 hours. And I feel that out of pure transparency for our residents and our businesses and organizational purposes, I feel we probably should discuss having a public meeting for ARPA only. That way, I feel we can get some of the residents involved. I think their voices probably should be, should be heard. Same thing we did with the street levy. The residents were involved on that, on picking the streets they felt needed to be repaved in their community. And I think it would be very special if we included the residents in some type of fashion in this, in a special meeting, just to make sure that we're covering what they feel needs to be covered along with this, with this list. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would agree. I think it's incumbent on us to explore options. It's certainly great to have guidelines, as Joshua has proposed this evening, on allocation of funding. Dave, I believe we're obligated to allocate these monies by the end of 2024. Is that correct? Okay. So in turn, I think now putting the ABCs together, a strategic plan, if you will, on allocation of funding over these next months is important. We certainly don't have to do it in two weeks because we'll have lots of input. I've already hit calls from people that are saying to us, we have been gifted with this extraordinary amount of money. How will it be spent? How will it be allocated? So, it's work in progress. We didn't expect to have a stamp on this this evening, but certainly guidelines and proposals of what is appropriate to do. Thank you.
Other comments on that particular issue?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I just, I want to make one thing maybe clear. At one point, I had suggested we could use ARPA funds for the relocation of the CSX Depot. And so I worked with Dave Jones. We took a look at our general fund. Council's already authorized the first $600,000 for that out of the general fund. I've asked Dave to put a $1.5 million placeholder on top of that $600,000 out of the general fund for the relocation of the depot. But as an example, under economic development, if you felt like the ARPA fund should pay for the additional $1.5 million, you have the ability to switch out a catalytic project. I'm just making sure that was clear because I think at some point, I may have said at a council meeting that that would be a good use of those funds.
City manager, when do you think you could have your staff available for a special meeting, which could have some very specific questions?
Well, I think it would be helpful if council maybe sent emails to the clerk's office and said, these are the additional items we would like to consider. Let's put them all on a single document, and then based on that document, we will invite staff that that area touches, and then we'll just schedule a meeting.
I would imagine that the economic development area is probably the one which will have some most interest as far as the $4.5 million. I want to say thank you for putting up there, at least, mental health, homelessness. I really do hope that we can grab the reins to that issue, county, as well as cities in the county, because it is a county-wide issue. I hope that we all look at the resources that are already available, not just ARPA, but also non-ARPA monies, grab the reins on that situation. Thanks for putting a bullet point up there for that. So, the plan you think we want, city manager, is to have us sent to the city clerk, various other ways, bullet points, blow the bullet points, so to speak.
Yeah, I think, I know that Councilman Ryan has brought up streets to me in the past. I know several of you have other ideas also. I think if we can just comprehensively create a list and just put a deadline, we need the list by, maybe it's two weeks from tonight, then we can align the appropriate staff with the list that's been created, and then work with council to schedule that special meeting.
So it'd be a specially set meeting, not during a council night, so it'll probably be like a third Wednesday, off to a third Wednesday in September. I've looked at my calendar, know that will fit, but that's kind of what we're looking at, is a third Wednesday of the month type of situation.
Whatever council's pleasure is.
Is that a concurrence on looking at that versus a Monday or Friday, just keep it just Wednesday? That makes sense.
It would be okay.
Great.
All right. Any questions, part of as a result of what city manager has said and what we've conversed up here?
All right. Okay.
Great. Mayor?
Please.
Dr. Lictor for the Kettering Health presentation is here in the audience, and he has an appointment that he needs to get to. Is it possible to move him up to?
We're going to have him speak right now.
All righty. You go get him, Colin.
Next, we're going to have Kettering Health Network report by Dr. Andrew Lictor, is that correct?
Yes.
Based on a request, I think, by Councilmember Ryan for this?
Perfect. Perfect. Let's move the slides.
All right. And it looks like the slides are up there already. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity. Am I allowed to take off my mask here? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Again, special thanks to Councilman Ryan for creating this opportunity for me to stand here before you and address you regarding Kettering Health Hamilton. There are several new things coming down the pipeline we just wanted to make you aware of. This particular presentation means a lot to me, since I grew up in the area. I used to actually just flip houses about two blocks down the street here with my uncle. I went to Miami Hamilton, where I did my undergrad, and then ultimately worked my way up into Toledo. I've done all my training here in Ohio and recently come home. I've been here for over a year now, starting my surgical practice with my wife and my three kids. So thank you so much for letting me present. We specifically today wanted to address our new breast center, but before we get into that, I think it's important to recognize just how the healthcare trends are changing. Really, we're all trying to deliver the best outcomes in this crazy time. That's the pandemic alone. That alone has kind of rocked our world. But on top of it, we're competing constantly nationally. People more and more are flying to Minnesota, they're flying to Florida, they're flying to California to get their care done. And we're also working in this environment of ever-declining reimbursement. But even still, Kettering Health Network has been recognized as a top 15 health system, Kettering as a whole. But our hospital here in Hamilton specifically is the only hospital in the county to achieve a leapfrog A designation for patient safety. And I think that's really important to recognize. On top of that, we have the American College of Radiology for our new breast imaging excellence, and we also just received a new award for our kidney failure. So I mean, in spite of all of this with the pandemic, we're still moving forward here in Hamilton and across the network as a whole. And actually, I think this was, Kevin can keep me honest, but this just came out in the last month, where we're now in accredited chest pain center, which shows the collaborative effort between the EMS here locally in town and everything that we're doing to really create a center of excellence that does more than just lumps and bumps, but takes care of people in their most critical time. You may remember, also now a Level 3 Trauma Center that's receiving its official accreditation. But when you look at our hospital as a whole, what we're talking about is at least 340 physicians who carry privileges at the, at the hospital. And we see over 30,000 patients a year. You had mentioned how the homeless and all this. I mean, this, this is a portion, but it's, it's everybody. We're seeing very large numbers, and we're growing every single year. We're even starting to draw from places far as Indiana, Cincinnati. We've had, one of our own physicians got sick four hours away. He drove all the way home just that we could take care of him. So, you know, it's, it is, it is a hospital that is continually growing. But what I wanted to specifically discuss was our new breast center. So we've been doing breast at our hospital for many, the breast cancer as a whole and breast health is something that has significantly evolved in the last 15 to 20 years, becoming ever more complicated. There's so many pieces to this puzzle. You know, at the top, there is the clinical expertise, but anymore, it's not just enough to be a breast surgeon, to be a hematology oncologist, or radiation oncologist, or the plastic surgeon. All of these pieces have to come together. And so we've been slowly accumulating this collection of physicians who can treat the entire patient, start to finish, here in Hamilton. So we passed out a new brochure showing all of our physicians who are on the new breast center panel. We've been doing all these things before, but now they're all here in Hamilton. Patients can get their care local. The second piece, besides just the physicians, is the technology. And so we've been pushing our technology. We've just upgraded our mammography machines. We've also got a new seat technology that's really important, that allows us to take less breast tissue and have better results as far as cancer with faster healing time. And then the service lines that we're expanding on would be things like physical therapy, lymphedema therapy, our nurse navigators to help these patients go through all the different physician appointments, that they can get them all done on one day or within at least one week. And then the last piece is, which is what comes into being part of a broader network, which is the multidisciplinary conferences and resources. So what we also have is, when you, when you come in with breast cancer, we're presenting you at a tumor board in front of 30 other physicians to say, hey, this is the plan. Everyone in agreement with this plan. Hematology oncology is there, radiation oncology, your surgeons are there, everybody's there, pathology is there, and we all talk through your cases. And as of July 5th, we just launched officially that we're a breast center, working towards a breast center of excellence, where patients can come and really, really get everything they need in one spot without leaving. And in my closing for the last bit, I kind of wanted to tell you guys a patient's story that kind of embodies our new program and what we're trying to achieve here in Hamilton. So we had a 42-year-old woman, I can't give you the exact specifics, but she presented with a palpable breast in her, her palpable mass in her breasts. It's, it's really every woman's worst nightmare. You've gone for your mammography, or you feel something, and you get that phone call that says, you have breast cancer. She comes to see me with her 10-year-old daughter and says, I need this out immediately. She's panicked, she's distressed. Her family is on the phone, I think three of them are on the phone with me at the exact same time, saying, you know, should she go to Cleveland Clinic? Should she transfer at least to Cincinnati? I mean, you guys are Hamilton. Can you really take care of her here? And the answer was yes, absolutely. Now, what made her cancer difficult was that she actually had a gene mutation. We're now doing our own genetics as well, where we're testing you, we're using the national standards for that. That's something new that we're doing. She was found to have the same mutation that Angelina Jolie had, and made her at an increased risk for both breast cancer and ovarian cancer and several other things. And so they said, whoa, oh, now she, now we know she even has this mutation. Are you sure you can still take care of her? Yes, we can still take care. We have everything that we need. Moving forward, she ends up with, we find that the cancer's actually spread into her armpit. She's even more panicked. We start her on chemotherapy. We go through six months of treatment, and this whole time holding her hand, she's been in my office probably once every two to three weeks as we slowly work through the chemotherapy and shrink her tumor down. And we finally took her to surgery and did the first-ever triple surgery at Fort Hamilton. Basically, what we did was, we offered her the option to resect her breast, the cancer in her armpit with a full dissection, the opposite breast as well. That's, that's the breast part of the surgery, typically done in one stage. But on top of that, we added in her plastics reconstruction by a plastic surgeon onsite here local, and she was able to get her THPSO, which is the removal of her female organs and her ovaries, all in one surgery in six hours. And so this is academic-level care that she's getting here in Hamilton, blocks away from her home, and she never had to leave. She's recovering from surgery, she's doing excellent, she's thrilled that she was able to get it all done in one go. She hasn't had any transportation issues getting to and from the hospital, because it's just so close. And it's, it's just been, it's been an incredibly rewarding experience, and she's now, you know, as far as we can tell, cancer-free, moving forward into the next steps towards the road to recovery in what would have typically taken another six months and two more procedures. So, you know, I think as we've, what we've done is, we've started with treating breast cancer to really moving to an actual breast center. And that's, that kind of embodies what we're doing over the hospital as a whole. You know, we're moving to a formal trauma center, where if you come in, we're not just patching you up and just putting you on a helicopter. We're treating you locally, we're taking you to surgery. We've got vascular surgery, now we've got trauma surgery, now we've got breast surgery. We've got the robotic surgery program, which is taking off. I actually just came from, did two robotic surgeries today and had an emergency trauma tonight. A guy crashed his car, so I apologize for being late. But it's, there's so much exciting, and I think what we're trying to do really mirrors what you and the city are trying to do, which is reinvent it. You know, I'm sure you've seen the signs saying, we're now not Fort Hamilton, we're Kettering Health, or whatever. But, you know, we're really trying to reinvent ourselves, expand, and even move from just this small community hospital to a tertiary referral center. And I think what we're seeing more and more is that people are willing to travel to our hospital. We're seeing it in our own physicians and by the family referrals. People are coming as far as Indiana, and they're coming to us, because we're doing things that you get in an academic center. And so we just really wanted the opportunity to inform everybody what we're doing, what our plans are for the program, and let you know, we're, we're just really excited to be a part of the ever-changing scene of the west side of Hamilton.
So we've got great surgical care, closer to home, closer to family.
Correct.
And you're a surgical director?
I'm the surgical director.
Of your hometown hospital?
Correct.
That should be on a billboard, the whole bit, because we're proud of, when our own does great, it makes us feel even better, you know?
Yeah.
So congratulations to the hospital and to you.
Thank you.
Want to say something?
Sure.
Doctor, thank you, Kevin, Sanja. I know Ron's not here. I had the, the pleasure of meeting all these folks last week for dinner at, at Tano's, and it was an amazing discussion, I think, over there, hour and a half.
Oh, yeah, it was a long time.
And it was just so exciting to, to have them tell me how far the hospital has come. But what's more exciting is where we're going.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, we're going and they're going, so we're both pushing in the same direction. And it's just, it's really special for the hospital and the city, even with the residents. The, the amount of care that the hospital can offer the city, I think, is just monumental. And the best part, they're not done yet. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so excited. We're here to work with you and anything we can do to help.
Yeah, absolutely. And just, I mean, the best thing that is, that, at least that I've been seeing, is that, you know, I want our patients or anybody, if we, I'm sure we have patients here, just share your stories about, you know, your experience, good or bad, things that we can do better, because, you know, we, we really do have a big vision for this hospital. I mean, I think there's an incredible need in this community. We're seeing very advanced breast cancer in, in young women. I mean, I've had, I think, three or four already this year that were in their 30s. And so, you know, this is just my last plug while I'm sitting up here, is, you know, for all of our women out there, make sure you're doing your breast checks in the shower. We had a bunch of pamphlets, which were sitting on my desk that I didn't bring, but they're little shower cards. So if you guys want those, you can come over to the hospital, give those to you. But just thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to come share kind of our vision and the new and exciting things that we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sonja, you've told us about the door-to-table time. You've told us about the wound care center.
Door-to-balloon time.
So it's great to have. The fastest we've ever accomplished is nine minutes. The national benchmark is 90 minutes, and Kettering Health Network's goal is less than 60. Our average is about 47 minutes. So we are doing much better than the national benchmark and even better than Kettering's standard. So we are not your dad's hospital anymore. We are an amazing facility, and I'm very proud of you.
I, I am as well. And if I can add to that, that's, that puts us in the top 4% of the country for our door-to-balloon time, which I think is, is very impressive. And it really speaks to the collaboration and teamwork that comes with being in a smaller hospital. So I've had the privilege and pleasure of working at over 20 healthcare facilities in my 13 years of training. And I chose to come here because it is smaller, because of how tight-knit it is. The nurses, they've all been there for 40 years, they're never going to leave. You know, everybody works. I have half these physicians' cell phones in my pocket. I just had a lady come in with appendicitis earlier today. We had her in the OR, and I think it was like an hour and 12 minutes. And so, you know, we will take care of you. I'm bringing my own wife to the hospital to deliver our next baby. Like, it's not only care that we're providing to you. We live here, we treat each other, we treat you, and we're very excited to do so.
Any comments from council?
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Neeland Boulevard Stripping Project by Director of Engineering, Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, citizens of Hamilton. Just to remind everyone, this was the original striping layout for the Columbia Bridge. So imagine as you're going eastbound across the bridge, from the west side to the east side, we had a left turn lane to go north on Neeland, a through lane to go straight through on Pershing, a straight and right turn lane together, and then also a dedicated right turn lane to go south on Neeland. So if you look at the location where the through and right turn lane was, we, we would only get about four or five cars in there before we start blocking the other turn lane. And the right turn lanes were also controlled by a traffic signal. We did a test earlier this year, I think it was in May, where we put cones and barrels up to close off the right turn lane, the extra right turn lane to go south on Neeland, just to see what kind of impact that would have on our traffic. We found that it had very little impact on traffic, so we decided to go ahead on a temporary measure and do the actual striping. And we also wanted to do that prior to school starting, to see what impact that would also have for us. So with that, this is the new striping plan that exists today. We now have, again, the same left turn lane to go north on Neeland, two straight-through lanes to go straight through onto Pershing, and then a dedicated continuous-flow right-turn lane to go south on Neeland. We realized there was going to be some confusion and impact on those residents that are used to going either in the left turn, in the left straight-through lane, that also use that as a right-turn lane. We realized there might be some confusion initially, but I believe as time goes on, those motors will understand that they need to get into the curb lane to continue the right turn. And we've talked to a couple officers at HPD. They believe it's a good improvement. We've not seen any significant issues yet. We'll continue to monitor that for another 60 days. Please give us your input as well. If necessary, we will return back to the old standard. The light, traffic lights still exist. We just bagged it for the time being. Also, for your information, from 2018 to 2021, there were 20 crashes associated with that right-turn lane with the two lanes and the traffic signal. So we're going to closely monitor that and see if there's an improvement and reduction, obviously, in the, in the number of crashes. That's my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
Just a quick question, if I could. Rich, so when you're coming from west-east in the straight-through lane, there are two straight-through lanes, the lane to the left going on to Pershing, will there eventually be a sign up there that says "left turn only"? Because people tend to get in that center straight lane, and then they cut you off, because you have to turn left at the next intersection. And so it'd be very helpful that...
I see what you're saying, yeah. Pershing ends up with a straight-through on the curb lane and a left, dedicated left-turn lane.
That's correct. And I think people don't realize that, so they got it to cut you off, or you have to stop. So eventually, that, I think there should be signage there that'll help.
We'll take a look at that. It's definitely a good improvement to, to consider.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
We should have received compliments on the continuous right turn off of the bridge. People find it to be very much safer than the, than the light that was there, which, which was confusing. There's a lot of stop and start, stop and start, and some just blew right past it. But I thank you for keeping an eye on the, that one lane that, that goes on to the bridge, just to see if it backs up. I haven't seen too much.
Okay.
But I've heard compliments about the other part, the continuous right off of the bridge.
Okay.
Any comments? Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, parking on Main Street by City Manager Joshua Smith. We checked outside to make sure they can hear these presentations, because I know there are two people out there, for our audience and citizens, who want to speak about Main Street parking. They have had problems hearing for any reason. I think they should be able to come in on this, so they could hear okay.
So how about Colin, you give us a thumbs up if you can hear Joshua while you're outside.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for my second presentation of the evening. This one is with respect to Main Street parking. Several of you had requested city staff prepare a presentation based on some feedback that you have received from mostly, I think, small businesses on Main Street, but maybe also some residents about parking as it currently sits, and what does the parking picture look like as some of these new developments that are hitting Main Street in the next 12 to 18 months, and the impact. So, and we have over 1,500 parking spots on Main Street. And just so you have an idea, that is measured from when you cross the High Main Bridge westbound to the Main-Eaton-Milville intersection.
One second, just a second, Major, that they may be coming in. Or is he just holding the door open?
No, he's got people. Colin, can you go back, or you, Dana, can you go back to this slide?
Yep.
Thanks. So just to break down the parking quickly, there, in that stretch that has 1,510 parking spaces, there are 987 business parking spaces. There are 49 off-street publics. So the off-street public would be primarily three areas. It would be Armstead Park by True West, that's a public parking area. The one that is catty-corner to that, at Main and D Street, and then the one that was constructed close to Flourish Home, that parking area. We've subtracted out of that number, there are 10 dedicated spaces for people that live in, above the Village Parlor. So we technically had 59, but we took out the 10 that were restricted for apartment use only. We have 73, what we call evening and weekend spaces. That is the parking spaces that are behind the Miami School, owned by Hamilton City Schools. That is signed right now that after, I can't remember if it's 5:00 or 6:00 PM till the next morning, that the public can park there. So I know in particular, a lot of people that go to Fretboard use that as their parking area. Fretboard... their parking area, um, Fretboard, Smoochies, et cetera. We have 175 future public parking spaces, and I have some more detailed slides about that. Uh, we have 235 spaces on Park and Ross, and then we have 166 on Main Street. That is how we came up to the 1,510 parking spaces in between the, the High Main Bridge and, call it Walgreens. So, some of the new parking spaces that were mentioned, 175, uh, we have, uh, been discussing with both Tell Ohio and US Bank. Uh, they have 78 parking spaces that they do not use after hours, since a lot of the, uh, the newer restaurants in that area will be using parking, uh, after 5 o'clock. This was the ability to, uh, put 78 spaces in pretty close proximity, uh, to, uh, a lot of the newer amenities are coming into Main Street. And it's also free parking, which, you know, for a, a city our size is, I think is pretty rare. Uh, I know I went to Hyde Park recently, and I think to fill the meter was $9 for one hour. So, uh, so that's 78 free parking spaces. We have, uh, 25, uh, go, go back to the last slide for a second. I apologize. Uh, Tell Ohio by itself has 78 spaces. Then US Bank has an additional 25 spaces around US Bank. Next slide. Um, we are working with our engineers right now to create an additional 14 spaces, uh, by Sutherland Park. We'll bring back a, a diagram of what that can look like. Next slide. A 327 Main Street. Uh, you'll see that, uh, on the agenda where we're looking to acquire the Karate, um, is it Karate?
It's Legacy Martial Arts Academy.
The Kung-Fu Studio on Main Street. Um, we could add-
Exactly.
34 additional, um, off-street parking spaces. Uh, 219 Main Street. So 219 Main Street, if you recall, had a, uh, a multi-story apartment structure that sat on that that was demolished. Uh, we do not want to build parking all the way to Main Street. We feel like since it's a mid-block that we need a building back in that site. Um, but what this would allow us to do is, if you can maybe envision where the back of the buildings touch 219 Main Street, that the parking would only be in the back half of that. Uh, we feel like that is, uh, close enough to C Street that that's going to be, uh, parking for Billy Yanks, that's going to be parking maybe for, even for Fretboard, uh, parking for some of those other businesses in that immediate area, um, True West, et cetera. Next slide, please. Everything in yellow is parking in that stretch. Um, I'm not saying it's all public parking, but that's, that's parking lots either, uh, based on that graphic of 1,510. That is where those 1,510 parking spaces are currently located. And Liz is here tonight, uh, to talk about, uh, the Rossville Flats, but I think we do have some update on some additional parking for that also, but I will let Liz lead that conversation.
Good evening. Um, so, so my slides talk holistically about the, um, project that is on your caucus agenda tonight. Um, so you'll see on the first slide that, um, that they read the Rossville Flats, applied for conditional use approval for residential units on the first floor, a, um, variance to our landscaping standards. Um, but then the main, um, topic of conversation at Planning Commission, that is, um, also a topic of conversation this evening, is a parking variance. Um, the project per our code requires 114 parking spaces, and, um, the, um, proposal as it came to, uh, from a technical perspective that came to Planning Commission had 42 spaces on site, um, although there is other parking associated with the project. Um, so, this is, I'm recapping what was proposed and discussed at Planning Commission, and then the next couple slides are updates. So, what was discussed at Planning Commission is 42 on-street park, or on-site parking spaces, um, and 31 off-site parking spaces at 30 North D Street. Um, the reason that the 31 off-street parking spaces didn't count their total is, for it to technically count, it has to be within 100 feet of the building, and I think they're like 140 feet. Um, so they're not far, but they're, um, but they didn't technically count to their, um, requirement. Um, and what, what we discussed at the meeting and what has continued to happen, um, since the meeting is that the property owned, the developer, I should say, Jim Cohen, um, and city staff have both been actively working to identify additional off-street parking options for this project. Um, at the Planning Commission meeting, neighbors expressed concern about the lack of parking for residents of the Rossville Flats and the overall need for a parking plan for Main Street. So, the update, you know, just a little background on the project and our requirements is, um, that the way our parking requirements and our zoning code read, um, you need one and a half spaces regardless of, per dwelling unit, regardless of the size of the apartment unit. Um, and so there are, um, there are 76 apartments total for the project. 73 of the apartments are one-bedroom, but, um, the size is not taken into consideration for the, um, parking requirement. Um, so we looked into what the difference in practical, in a practical sense, one-bedroom versus two-bedroom might have. Um, and we asked around and got some information about, um, comparable one-bedrooms in the area, and we got the information that at Markham Apartments, there are 34 one-bedroom units. 29 are occupied by a single tenant with one car. Um, if the percentage is the same at the Rossville Flats, the project would utilize 90 parking spaces. And then, for the 14 one-bedroom units core owns on Main Street, 79% of them are occupied by a single tenant. So, um, the update is that there's been progress on parking since Planning Commission. Um, and right now, um, as it stands, the project is proposing, um, at least 98 parking spaces that are, um, dedicated to the project, um, through, um, additional sites that, um, have been identified for parking. So there, the, there's been a, an ability to add, um, 12 additional parking spaces on-site. So instead of, um, or, it's 53 parking spaces now instead of 42, excuse me. Um, and through, um, additional property being acquired. And then, um, 31 parking spaces at 30 North D Street, which you'll see, which you see on the map. And then, the other, um, site identified on the map is, um, behind 412 Main Street, which is a property that the city recently acquired. And this may not be the ultimate location of those 14 spaces, but it, but if nothing out, if they, if nothing can be found closer, those would be dedicated for, for, um, residents of, um, the Rossville Flats. So ultimately, um, the minimum parking spaces committed for the project, um, is 98 at this point. So, any questions about that?
So, uh, the variance is to have the distance issue be waived, basically, because there are quite a few spots just outside of the required distance, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, there, I guess there's, from a technical perspective, I guess the information that you have in front of you is that they still have a 42 spaces, um, uh, that count towards their, you know, so that it, and the one, and we didn't have the information that there was new spaces until like an hour ago. Um, so, for where it changed from 42 to 53 on-site. So those would count. But as of right now, the other ones technically wouldn't count. So it's still a similar, or same variance request from a technical perspective.
Okay. Any questions right now for Liz while she's at the podium?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
So will any parking be eliminated, Liz, uh, because of the Rossville Flats, or let's say Agave and Rye, will any street parking be eliminated?
I do not believe so.
Okay. So we're not anticipating losing parking because we're putting new businesses along there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Do you want to say anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, just, uh, maybe a few comments. We've dealt with a lot of over-the-ryan developers in the past couple of years that have come to Hamilton and, and kicked the tire, if you will. Kick the tires. And one comment I heard, uh, several comments I've actually heard, is that we have an abundance of parking compared to what they're used to. A lot of times, they'll rent an apartment for 1,500 to $2,000 a month, and it's up to their residents to go find their parking. Maybe it's in a parking structure, maybe they're paying $150 a month for additional parking. I, I'm, I do get concerned, you know, Main Street to me should not be a lot of visible parking. I think it should be buildings, people, activity. Um, I'm nervous that we, we keep doing more and more parking. Uh, the studio that we just talked about, I'm not overly happy. That's the one that's, I guess, would be immediately east of Agave and Rye. Um, that would service, it'd be a public area that serviced everyone within a few blocks. I just don't like the fact that it, it fronts Main Street. I think Main Street really should be buildings. Um, I think we need to do a more efficient job of dealing with our parking issues. I want to give Mallory Greenham credit for reaching out to, uh, US Bank and Tell Ohio. I mean, that just, immediately just by making those phone calls, put almost 100 new parking spots into the rotation after 5:00 PM, which is the restaurant's busy time. Uh, you know, thankfully, the Hamilton City Schools several years ago allowed us, when we did the conditional use permit for the Miami School, to take those 70-plus parking spaces and also put that into the mix. And that was prior to even Quarter Barrel opening at that time, which is now Fretboard. Um, there's no doubt that people love suburban parking, but we are an urban city. We're not a suburban shopping mall. So we need to do a, a better job of trying to be more efficient with what we have and try to protect Main Street, Main Street's integrity, which truly should be buildings. Thank you.
I think it's an incredibly great partnership with Tell Ohio, US Bank, and Hamilton City Schools. I mean, that's just how creative the city team is and how much those particular, uh, businesses, you know, care about their community and their neighborhoods. So that's, that's really great to hear.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Joshua, Liz, thank for the, Pat, you just used the word creativity. Mallory for thinking out of the box and, and calling our partners, the, the collaborators that we have that are contiguous to Main Street. Uh, Joshua, I agree with you, that, uh, buildings that are, are sidewalk-capable and, and ready to have other businesses available and things like that. How, how important the existing businesses are between Bee and Walgreens, but also as we add and develop this property. Liz, I'm glad to hear that we're not pulling any parking spots off where they're existing now, but that composite you have, the blue and yellow composite is very telling. And that doesn't even include, uh, future collaborations. And we've talked about those in meetings of what will be the contiguous properties that people feel safe and be able to walk to and from. So, thanks again for everything tonight.
All right. Uh, if there's, if there's no other city comment, I think I'd like to have the Main Street business folks come up here now while it's fresh on everybody's mind. And, uh, Karen, you may have signed the book first. This is kind of quasi-audience of citizens, but I think it might be good to have it right now.
Good evening. I'm Karen Underwood, and I live at 1150 New London Road. So, um, I did some studying today also, and I wanted to submit a, a couple of maps to the clerk for the city council, if you don't mind, since I don't have a slide.
Motion to accept.
So that is a map of the area. Okay, thank you.
Do you have enough copies for all of us?
There was like 10 or 11.
Let me get it. We'd like to have them up here while she speaks. So, motion to accept these, make them part of the record. Motion made by Councilmember Nab, somebody, Councilmember Fear, all in favor to accept these, these, uh, maps. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Hearing none. Go get those up here at your convenience.
I got a lot of maps here. Sorry. So I just want to start by all, by saying that, um, I do believe that Main Street and, uh, the city and Hamilton is doing a, a, a good job with parking. Uh, if you have a retail place, if you have a, a restaurant, I do believe that you can find a parking space and maybe walk a block or two. Uh, that's, that's not a problem. I mean, uh, if you want to go to dinner and it's in a downtown area, you do expect to walk a couple blocks. And, uh, it's kind of nice and part of the experience. You can window shop and, uh, see things that maybe you wouldn't have seen if you'd parked right next to the building. So, but this is a little different. We've not had in the Main Street district this kind of a residential density before. So, I, I did some studies today. I actually stood in the middle of where the parking lot would be of the, uh, thing, and that is the X, one of the X's on the map. It's kind of in the middle, looks like it's in the middle of a tree. And, uh, I took my wheelie and I wheeled down to the very first parking spot of the 31 that they are proposing, and it was, um, 496 feet. So, uh, it's, it's quite a distance. Um, I did not wheel down to the 14 spots, which is to the west, because I was not aware of that area, uh, this, this afternoon when I was doing my study. So, um, I, I kind of was basing this on, not to the door, but basing it on, okay, if you're lucky enough to be one of the residents that gets the 42 spots that's right downstairs to get your groceries upstairs, their laundry, you've been shopping, it's different than being, going to a restaurant or a retail store where you aren't carrying things or you're not coming home from work. Also, the length of time in that parking is going to be different. If you work Monday through Friday, you might park your car there from Friday night until, uh, the next Monday morning and just walk or use your bicycle. And that's great. Uh, but what I'm trying to say is, the 42 spots aren't enough, I don't think, for the residential use. The residential people want to be close. So I actually did another thing today, and because I don't know if you realize how far 500 to 550 feet is. So I went to some council members' houses and I made maps of your house and how far away 500 feet is. And I would like to give those to the record, if you don't mind. You can give them to the-
Motion to accept.
So, so moved. Motion made by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor to accept this next map. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post and sign. Hearing none.
There is, there's only one per person, because if Tim doesn't, well, Tim and Carla live on the same, Hamilton's a small town. We all know each other, we all know where everybody lives. So, it was pretty easy to do that. But I kind of wanted to let everybody know that, like, uh, the first one was, um, Pat Moller's house. If you had to come home at night and you had to park your car between 500 and 500 feet away from your house, you would be down past, almost to Belmar Court, past Richwood. It's, it's a distance. Uh, this is how I, I, if your neighbors think there was a crazy lady out there today, yes. I was driving in my car down Columbia Road with the wheelie out the window, getting the 500 feet, so.
One way, don't it?
I know. It worked. So, um, Eric, you, you live on Sutherland?
Yeah, it's a little closer, because I'm, I'm at 4.
Yeah, and I only measured from your driveway, the end of your driveway. I didn't go up to your front door or anything. I mean, and, uh, 500 feet, it almost exactly was to the corner of Livingston and Hamel. So it was around, down past your court and then to the next street. So, two streets from you. And Susan, I couldn't even get out onto New London because I wasn't going to wheel on. New London's only 425 feet from your house to New London Road, but it felt like a lot. I mean, I was driving, not walking, and I was going really slow. And it's a bit wasted, carry your groceries. I'm just saying that residential is different. This, I hope this is pointing it out. I'm not trying to be, you know, rude or something. And Tim, uh, your house was down past Stephen Mary Anne. And Carla, uh, from your house, it was 540 feet to the, uh, corner of Hermay and Beeler. So, if everybody can see.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I, I just thought that that might be a, Michael, I'm sorry, I don't know where you live.
It's okay. You just told me to cut my grass.
Can you, can, can you go take a wheelie and measure out 500 feet?
Sure.
And you'll be like, ooh, that's a, that's a bit of a distance. So, what I'm trying to say is, if the residents only have 42 spots and there's 76 apartments there, and I agree with what the city did down from the 114 to the 90, you know, let's, let's be realistic about what you really need. It's one-bedrooms. There'll be a lot of single people in the one-bedrooms as they are in the Markham Apartments. Uh, I, I agree with the data. But, uh, okay, so I thought it was a 48-spot variance that they were requesting, you know, from the 90 to the 42, and they've- you know, from the 90 to the 42, and they've added up to 53. But it's still about a 30 to 40-spot variance. If you are coming home and you get one of the first 42 spots, you're going to take those 42 spots. And those are going to fill up pretty fast. If you're one of the remaining 30-plus people to come home with your car, I have a feeling that you're not going to go the 550 feet down the block one way or the 14 feet or down to Tell Ohio or all the other places. You're going to take the spots that are right on Park Avenue behind you or Main Street in front of you. And that's where we have a problem, because there's a lot of development. The Agave and Rye is coming in. I don't know if you know, quite frankly, but my sister and I are tripling the size of our Richard's Pizza location. We have been studying our parking. I'm taking a property we own on Ross Avenue and turning it into an Airbnb, because the backyard, I can put 10 to 12 parking spots for my employees and they're double-stacked. So on the weekends, especially after we expand our restaurant, we are not taking parking spaces that, you know, for our customers, so that our customers then have to go on the street. Okay, so, you know, I feel that we, as a business owner and a property owner on Main Street, are really, really trying to do our due diligence. And we're just a restaurant that is, you know, one hour, two hours. We're also doing a Richard's Express entrance with better curbside parking and online pickup, and I've got plans and architects working on it. It's really exciting. But with Agave and Rye, Agave and Rye is going to use some, need those online parking spaces as well as the retail stores. I know Kim's going to talk. Kim and us, we share parking now, because she's kind of in our little corner. And her customers and our customers are going to be vying for the same parking spaces. We're going to have to rely on the on-street parking spaces. We can't have people that live in those flats taking them from Friday night until Monday morning, because they don't want to park 550 feet away to carry their groceries home and unload and carry, you know, the children and get the kid out of the seat, you know, and carry it. So it's not for every business that's coming. But for a residential, it's a little different. It's a little more critical that their parking, that they take a little more care to get parking that's a little closer for their residents. I would want it, if I was a resident there, I wouldn't want to walk 500 feet, so. Thanks. Any questions?
Any questions at this point?
I actually have a few comments, if I may. So I need to double-check with Jim on this, but it's my understanding from Jim that he will assign the parking spaces and that your rent will be predicated on the proximity.
Okay.
So no different than if you go to the Markham today and you see the numbers on the parking spaces and the different areas. He assigns people some areas of parking, some are not assigned, depending where they're at. But people do pay a premium for that. He, in my conversations with Jim, because I asked him how he was going to determine who gets a parking spot close to the building, who gets one, we'll call, I'm going to call it 150 feet, you call it 500 feet away, from the edge of the property to those parking areas. And I think we can put it right in the conditional use permit that if you are a resident of the Rossville Flats, that you have to park in the Rossville Flats parking lot unless you are maybe driving up to a restaurant and you are paying for parking like anyone else that would be on the street. My assumption is that we are going to go to metered parking on Main Street to help the turnover. If you noticed, in the public parking spaces already, we have put up signs, because some people did try to park over an entire weekend in some of our parking spaces. I don't know if Mallory, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it three-hour parking? What is the parking time limit?
On Main Street?
Yeah, like, on the off-street parking spaces that the city owns. Rich, do you recall? So by Flourish Home, if you go in there, there is limited parking. So that way, people can get towed if they're spending more than whatever the assigned time is that we put inside those parking lots. When you say that Rossville Flats could acquire maybe something closer, do you have a suggestion on where they could get that additional parking?
Well, I have heard that they've been working with some of their adjoining property owners. I don't, I can't speak for how their negotiations are going, but the planning commission has allowed, gave them a condition of finding an additional 20 parking spaces within 100 feet, not without. So that was one of the planning commission recommendations. And I was just trying to say that I think maybe they need to up that amount a little bit. So 20 is getting pretty close. I'm here to compromise, not to keep Rossville, the Main Street Flats out. I just am bringing this to everyone's attention before, you know, if you are assigned in the 31, I hope you stay over there in the 31 and you don't park in front, because you are unloading your groceries and, oh, you just forget about your car. And maybe there is parking enforcement matters that the city does need to take, and maybe that would solve the problem. All of it just needs to be part of the discussion now, rather than later, so.
We're here for solutions, that's what we're trying to get.
I agree.
One other parking area that, if you look at, has substantial parking that is never utilized right now is the former Family Video, because not only do they own the Family Video building, but they also own the parking lot that's across the street. We've had several conversations with the realtor that represents them, and there is no interest right now outside of maybe an exorbitant lease to take some on that parking on. I know that they have brought several prospects to town to show them that building in the last six months, but as of today, I've not heard of anything that's moving forward. But that certainly can be a conversation. I understand that, again, I'll go back to my original comments, people want parking, but what Hamilton needs more than parking right now is we need people on the street. And Rossville Flats, in my mind, brings, hopefully, 90 to 100 new individuals to Main Street, which will benefit everyone. I mean, they can park in their assigned areas and they can walk to the restaurants. That is the multiplier, in my mind, that's important to the small businesses. There is no doubt we're going to have parking problems. Until we activated the meters, as an example, around the Markham Apartments, what you said is exactly what happened. People that live there were parking on the street and they were taking the parking spots. I acknowledge that. The parking meters that were put in, I've had some people say it's a money grab by the city. I think we only charge, I think it's a dollar for two hours, but it was only a mechanism so we could actually track when people were there. And I will say, since we've installed those, it's freed up a lot of parking spaces. StarTech, in the past, on High Street, there is no doubt, on the weekends in particular, they were not parking in the garage like they're supposed to. They were parking on the street. And we received a lot of complaints from Almond Sisters Bakery on down that said, hey, we have people that want to come and they can't, because every street parking spot is full. So there is no doubt that you are correct, that there's going to be probably some early growing pains with Main Street. However, until they happen and we can actually see where, like, the pain points are, then we can maybe develop a plan on how to do those. My vision for Main Street is to have the similar parking kiosks that we have on High Street and around the Markham, only as a mechanism to keep that traffic moving. I had a conversation with Dan Bates at The Chamber, probably in the last week, about starting a survey with businesses on Main Street and asked, what is the appropriate amount of time? I got a complaint, so I didn't realize, but someone told me that one of our parking kiosks is only one hour versus two hour. They want two-hour parking. I know that some restaurants prefer three-hour parking in talking to Tannos and others in the past. You know, our goal is to free up the spaces and allow that to happen. Can I ask a question of Liz, Mayor?
Please, do.
Liz, as a conditional use permit, can we require, if you live in the Rossville Flats, that you have to park in your assigned parking spot if you're going to be there for more than, like, an hour or two?
Yes, it just could be how we deal, like, how does it actually work? Yes, of course.
I think Karen brings up a good point. I think that we need to put a conditional use item in the conditional use permit and say, if you live here, now, if they want to stop and actually go to a restaurant, I think they should be able to do that. But to her point, they can't park somewhere Friday night through Monday morning and take valuable parking up. And we can certainly work with Jim on assigning each of the residents an actual parking spot. And then, also, I'm going to confirm this with him, but he is concerned, as you are, about parking, because he is more of a suburban apartment developer, not an urban one. His urban projects have been more recent. His concern has been, can I lease an apartment if you have to, we'll call it, anywhere from 150 to 500 feet away? And his design, if I'm correct, on the backside of this facility accommodates people for drop-off for groceries, things of that nature, allows short-term parking to get your groceries upstairs, so that way you don't have to carry them from one of those parking spots. Inside the Markham, some of you may have seen some of the trolleys they have. A lot of them have what they call those Amazon carts where they pull in. Because if you walk from the edge of his, as far as this parking space, to his back door, I believe it's 350 feet. So, I mean, it's a decent walk, even on his private parking area. So a lot of people I see using those, what I call Amazon trolleys, but, or wagons, but. Yeah, I mean, I think that we could, we can have a conversation about amending the conditional use permit, making him assign everyone a parking spot and say, if you're going to be, you know, more than an hour or whatever it is that you have to park in your assigned spot, you cannot be taking up public parking spaces. As just one, I'm sure there's going to have to be other solutions on top of that, but I think that'd be a good start with him to set that expectation from day one.
And, you know, if they just continue to, continue trying to find parking spaces, which they probably want to do, that are contiguous to their property, you know, not down the street. So if they would just continue doing that.
I'll just tell you this, I've been privy to many of these conversations. It is not easy to find parking and to negotiate a fair price for that parking. I mean, I can tell you that we have personally spoken to probably 20 different property owners within a block radius of that site about parking.
And that's, you know, back to why we did the Airbnb. The Airbnb, we're putting a privacy fence between the back of the house, where the new deck will be, and our parking lot. If you rent it, you know, 12 months out of the year to someone, they expect to get the whole yard. They expect to get the off-street parking, a place for the kids to play, a place that's, you know, fenced for the dog. If it's an Airbnb, they can park on the street right out front, on Ross Avenue, come in the front door, go out the front door. They're only there like three days. They don't have the kids and dogs and playground, play equipment and everything that my tenants in the past have used up all of my backyard. So the backyard's going to be for parking. So if any of the additional, if that can be, you know, proposed to property owners, so, you know, maximizing the use of your property, so. That's all. I've talked too long. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kim McKay. I know everyone here, and I live at 597 Beeler. I'm here just as a business owner. I've had my business for 16 years. I came down on Main Street when there wasn't too much on Main Street. It was actually a pretty desolate, scary area. I've worked very hard and I have a very successful business as a result. I don't have to do things to get people to come to my business on Main Street. I've been very active in the Main Street Area Association and also now with our new merchant, downtown merchant. Had a meeting this morning on that. I want to continue to keep my business to be successful. And I'm answering questions daily from clients, where are we going to park when all this is going on? I totally support this. As Joshua knows, the first weekend he was here and we made this big announcement, I stood up and talked about, has anybody in this room been to OTR lately? That's what we're going to have. But the difference I see with us and OTR in some ways is, when we go to OTR, and we do go often, we park and we walk, but there's bar, restaurant, bar, restaurant, a little gift shop. There's no businesses right in the middle. There's not a dentist office usually right in the middle. So therefore, it's a little bit different. People are going to be walking a little farther area without a constant something to look at or to stop in and have a beverage. So my concern for our business moving forward, Karen's, I'm not trying to grow my business. I just want to keep what I have and keep the 15 people that have been working for me solely employed, because we are commission-based. If I don't have customers sitting in my chairs, my girls aren't making money. If my people have to walk too far, they can't get, they're not going to come. Currently, and I don't have any maps, but currently, if you go up and you turn where Ritzy's is on the left there, we use all of that for my girls. That's where they park. We used to use Ritzy's lot. When I moved to Main Street, Paul was a friend of ours. We had a verbal agreement that my girls would use his overload parking if needed. We did a lot of things, sending a map to our clients when we left, because currently, at that point, we were across the street from Hamilton High School. Very easy parking. So my husband said, people don't like to park on Main Street. We really need to do a map showing them where all the parking is, and we did all of that as we sent out the letter. Had no problems. Had extra parking with Paul. Never dreamed Ritzy's would never be there, but now it's not there. And we use that parking. My girls park there. Well, now, ever since the city and Agave and Rye worked together, we have no longer used that, but we use the street parking along that side. We park like five cars there. We really need 15 to 17 spots, because Carla might have an appointment at 2:00 and Susan has one at 1:00, and Susan's still there till Carla leaves. So sometimes there's an overlap. Not all my chairs are filled, not all my people work every day. There's a variance there. But with the people parking on that street, are we going to lose that parking? Agave's bringing in 300 seats, I was told. So we've got that. We've got the apartment going in. The apartment has retail space. We've got the new little kitchen store. Everybody loves it. We've got us, and now we've got Richard's, expanding. So that corner is going to be extremely congested. I spoke with Liz about my concerns about, no one stops at the stop sign or the crosswalk there. Liz has talked to Rich, and I'm very happy that they've worked forward. And moving forward, we're going to have a light there. I was very concerned there was going to be a bad accident, because you cannot cross that street. My concern as a businessperson and a citizen, and having 18 employees that want to keep their job, my business is going to have a hard time surviving with parking meters that they have to go feed. Are they allowed to park there? Where are they going to park? And now that Ritzy's take, or that Karen and Gail are expanding, taking up more space, granted, ours is during the day, but there's only so much street parking. I can't have my 70- and 60-year-old women walking three blocks to get their hair done. So I'm pleading with the city, basically, please keep your eyes and ears open, because I'm very concerned with that corner being very crowded. And I don't want to close my business due to the fact that my clients can't get there because of parking issues. And it's already arising with, and these are prominent people in our area. These aren't, my prices are high. These aren't people that we don't want there. And I feel like we've really weathered the storm. Joshua's done a fantastic job. His team has done a fantastic job. We don't have the panhandlers, we don't have near what we had before. And I feel a lot of that is because we've worked together. And I just want to keep a viable business. And I don't know, Liz and I chatted about off-street parking, those terrible apartments, and they aren't good. And that keeps a lot of bad people right there on E., going up to park. I don't know if there's something we could work out with them. That seems to me like those are not good people. They were the squatters that parked in Ritzy's lots. They're the people that are on the streets. I don't know if there's something we could do with that. I know that's tearing things down, that's costing a lot of money. But I think, being somebody that goes to OTR, being somebody that goes to these restaurants, we want them to be successful as much as we do. But I don't think we can have people walking four blocks either. Not when you have businesses in between all of that. It's not like, hey, I'm going to walk down there and we're going to stop at the wine bar, and then we're going to stop here, and then we're going to look in this window. So I think that we're a little different than OTR in that way. So, and my people are during the day, a lot of them, as well as in the evening. And what do I do with my staff? I can't tell my staff to go park at Family Dollar and walk down the street with $200 in your wallet. You know, as the police told me, I want you parking right out front, because you're walking out of here with money. And I have done that for 15 years, almost 16 years. So that's my concern from a businessperson that came down and started a business when there was nothing there and have been successful with it. But I've been successful because my business works off people and how people, they have to feel comfortable to come to you or you'll lose them. And I don't want to see that happen. I've worked too hard for it, and I think our city has worked too hard to have that. So, but I do want to thank Liz and Rich, and I want to thank all of you for listening and whatever we can do to work together. I'm very glad to work any way we can to come to an agreement that makes everybody successful.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Kim, how many off-street parking spots do you have in your lease currently that you're entitled to? you're entitled to in your lease with your landlord?
Just the spots that are right behind.
That, so I counted, if I'm, is there six spots behind?
Yeah.
Six spots. So you have six spots that you have in your lease, and what you're saying, at a high-peak time, you have up, I think you said 17?
Because you have, because you have the girls that are working, and I, I have seven, yeah, we have, yeah, at least 15, 17 would be, if people overlap.
Okay.
14 to 14, probably, depending on the time of the day. If it's in the morning, nobody, you know, that's not the case. The height for us is typically 1 to 2 to 8, or at Raleigh, even 6 to 7.
Okay. So if you have six dedicated off-street parking spots behind your building, let's say that 8 to 10 would be sort of hitting your peak. I think there's an opportunity, and I, I would like to sit down, maybe understand the hours of operation, which nights you're working, which ones you're not.
Right.
I think that, again, there is a lot of parking that's not utilized during the day.
And, and we're not, like, the weekend, we're here 10 to 3.
Yeah.
The restaurants aren't going to be busy 10 to 3.
Yeah, I think...
Fridays, we're out of there by, by 5:00 or 6:00.
I, I think...
Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we're there late, but...
I think there's an opportunity to get some written agreements that perhaps help you out. I mean, has someone told you that you're not allowed to park on the Ritzy parking lot anymore?
Um, do you want me to address that? One of my girls' cars was towed from Ritzy's parking lot. Right around the time when the money was trans, it was not a good situation. It was right around St. Patrick's Day or the next day. It was actually, was St. Patrick's Day Wednesday or Thursday, guys? It was either that night or the next night. And actually, I, we were talking about brainstorming around 8:00, and I'm usually still working, that's why I think it was actually St. Patrick's Day, because I had marked off early. And we were brainstorming what we were going to do for our 15th anniversary, and then my young girl, who was, Agave and Rye had just been announced. She was my happiest girl, that we were going to have a taco establishment. Either if it was Karen doing it, whoever it was going to be, they were so thrilled, running around. My employee that was the most excited goes out to get in her car, and her car's gone. There had been some squatter cars that had parked there for quite a long time. And from what I understood, after talking to Tom and the police, I spent all day Friday the next day trying to figure out what happened. We called on her car, said, your car's either been towed, or it's been hotwired and stolen. We immediately called the police, they called the tow area.
Yeah.
And they said, yep, it's, it's here. It's been towed. So I said, okay. And then we all started talking, wait a minute, when I got here, there was a tow truck there. Well, that wasn't unusual for us, because Ritzy's always had tow trucks there. We just weren't connecting the dots. I was not aware that the sale had been done. So then I find out that someone that worked for the city saw the tow, the squatters there, they'd been there forever. Must have told someone at the city. And then they came over and they took, they, whatever they do, tag them. They tagged the cars. My employee's car was not there. My employee has a very nice car. It was not there. On Mondays, they park in our lot. That's the only day they're allowed to park in our lot, because there's only two people working. Then on Wednesday, Cindy comes out to take a picture. I think it was Cindy that took the picture. Cindy took the picture, and Nikki's car was parked there. The tags were then removed. When the tow truck, they were put on the side of Ritzy's building. But of course, my employee never got tagged. So then, the next day, the tow truck shows up, and they were there for quite a while. Nikki comes to work. They take all three of the cars. So Nikki gets out of work, and her car's gone. I said, here's $100. You're going to need $100 to go get it from the police right now. She went to get it from the police, and they said, oh no, you got to go get it tomorrow morning, and it's $200. So she had to go get her car the next day. I was on the phone immediately with the police. It took me probably eight hours. I think at 4:30, I finally got through to the girl I talked to. And of course, I can't remember her name right now. If I heard it, I could. I, I was very upset. I called Brandon right away. Brandon, what, what happened? Why are we not allowed to park there? Well, it's a city-owned property. I said, well, how are we to know that? How, how am I to know that this has transpired, and now we don't own it? There's not one sign that says you can't park here. You need to put a sign up if that happens. How do I know that?
I, I think that the reason I brought that up is simply to say that I, I think that until Agave and Rye takes possession, which they have not yet, it still remains a city property, that short-term, we could probably help by signing it for maybe two or three-hour parking up until the time they take possession. And that buys us maybe a few months to have...
That would be wonderful, Joshua. After that happened, obviously, I told my girls, don't park there. And if, if that can be worked out, that would be lovely. That would be great. And, and, you know, mistakes happen. So I wasn't upset about that. I just, moving forward, didn't want it to happen again.
We're already got some short-term solutions being addressed right now, and I just...
Yeah, Rich is nodding his head. We can have our sign shop put up. Is three-hour enough time, or do you need, is it four-hours better? I'm not sure how long people stay.
I would go four, just because...
Four-hours?
They don't worry.
Okay.
So that would be awesome.
Great.
And thank you for listening and understanding. We're just trying to avoid a problem. I'm, I'm very proactive, so I want to avoid a problem and, and keep everybody happy, and I don't want to lose employees or, or customers, because we're not successful if we don't have either. Right?
We want to see you succeed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just one very last question.
Yes.
Is there any possible to work with your landlord to get those eight spots that are to the west of your building, that are right next to your building, that are off-street?
I think that's where... Go ahead, Karen.
Can you go to just a Google Map, Daniel? It might be easier to E. and Main Street.
We, we have a few spots that are between the building, and that's where my sister and myself, my parents, our bookkeeper, park during the day. So we have signs up that, because also we have visitors, people, it's our office parking. And the area between, up there, Main Look, Red Line...
Right there.
That entire area will be the outdoor dining area.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's being taken away and turned into cornhole and fire pits and outdoor bar.
Okay, no, that's exciting. I just, I just saw, I was looking at that on the aerial, and that just looked like it was adjacent to Main Look.
Trust me. We were trying to figure out how to, because, you know, we use that parking, and we're an employee-owned company, so we'll all be parking over at the Airbnb, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kim, I do have one question.
Yes.
Is Rich Engel coming in to see you sometime soon? He's nodding his head, so. Thank you.
Well, you all know what's happened to Jeff Bowling, and the first thing he said is, my hair looks great. And when are you coming up here to cut my hair? So, so we'll take care of anybody. Thank you.
Okay. I think that takes care of that particular special presentation. Okay. May not go to audience, citizens. If there's a wish to speak, may speak during this part of the agenda, or reserve the right to speak when the item is, for us for a vote. Individuals are required to sign this public speaking book, which I have, and each speaker's allowed up to five minutes. Looks like they're going order. We've got Jim Lottman first. Jim, out there.
Mayor, before, mayor, before we begin, just remind...
I'm Jim Lottman.
Hold on a minute, Jim.
Before we begin, just remind council members to speak into their microphones, just for everyone in the hallway or in the lobby.
Okay. All right, Jim, what's going on?
Jim Lottman, 135 Timmy Hill Drive. Okay, yeah, okay, well, I don't know, huh? Let's see, um, I'm, so, I'm thinking about that, um, that, uh, there's, um, uh, there's parts on, you know, the train tracks on, um, on, uh, East Avenue, you know, where the old train tracks are used anymore. Some, I mean, people go right around them, it's so hard to get around them, things, it's so rough and hell.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll make a little list, so you've got...
You should, you should, you should sue them, because you're a lawyer. All right?
I got it on my list here, Jim. Okay, what's next?
Okay. And also, um, um, let's see, uh... I was, and, um, I hear on these, on High Street, there's, um, telephone, um, sewer lanes, you know, are sinking down again, you know, and, and you can't hardly miss them, or the car, or the cars. The whole bunch of them, between, um, Forest Street, up near Route 4, almost, um, about 4 or 5 of them at least.
Okay.
And going, 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 going east. And you should sue, sue all the fucking around too. It's been like that for years. Come in, I don't, come in, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Okay, so that's your list for this evening, then?
Well...
That's your list for tonight?
Yes.
Rich, did you get an idea what those...
I got it.
...requests are? Okay. Rich, you'll look into it.
I'm saying, also, if you don't do it, sue them both. You're a lawyer.
We are a, a solution-based group here. We want to get solutions. If it takes the law...
Well, if you get a solution, so, that's a solution, or the city, you know...
It takes lawyers, guns, and money, whatever. Long story short, Rich...
Not necessarily in that order.
Rich will take, I mean, Rich is your friend, he will take care of some of these items, but you're right, sometimes it does take legal action. You're right. So thank you for reminding us.
Especially that, um, around, um, there's, I wrote on, um, East Street, can't go, and people go 34, 20, 30 feet around, and it's so rough and hell, you know?
We're working on it. Thank you, Jim, again, for coming to us.
Thank you.
With your concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stephanie Garcia Tovar. She is out there?
Actually, Stephanie sent me a message.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, she is going to have to come back by the next meeting, and I believe Daniel was supposed to read the letter, and could you hold that out, maybe send it to council tomorrow, and then we could read it out on the 25th if she comes by?
Absolutely. That can be done.
And Bowling renaming the park.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm John Murray. I live at 615 Franklin, strangely enough, two blocks away from all this parking issues. And I've been there for 35 years. I have two kids that graduated Miami University. I've lived there for the last 11 years. I've worked my business out of my home. I'm an insurance agent. I'm a little nervous, I apologize. But I want to talk about a gentleman in the neighborhood that's flying a drone. I would like the city of Hamilton to consider enacting laws concerning the use of a drone by a private citizen to invade the privacy of another person and/or their property. Recent harassment of my family and many others in the neighborhood by the owner of a drone is the reason for this request. Flying the drone with a camera close to my house, peering in the windows of various neighbors, and flying over my granddaughters while playing in the backyard seems to be a true invasion of privacy. Drones are becoming increasingly easier to buy and use. Cameras are increasingly better quality and range. I found that there was nothing the police could do to help me, because there were no laws on the books. My wife and I took many videos on our phones showing how close the drone came to us, and the large number of times that the owner invaded our privacy. I have spoken to many people in the law enforcement and in the city government here. With no law, there is nothing that can be done on a criminal basis. Many of the laws concerned, the ownership, excuse me, and use of a drone are controlled by the FAA. However, they all favor the owner of the drone and do nothing to protect the reasonable expectation of privacy by a homeowner in Hamilton. I believe that as property owners, we have a reasonable expectation of privacy. Another individual that uses a drone and camera to invade our privacy should have the expectation of a criminal penalty. The FAA points out on their website, the use of an unmanned aircraft system with examples of state and local government police powers, that can, the state and local government can specify that unmanned aircraft systems may not be used for voyeurism. Few laws are enacted for this. It's, however, it's up to us to decide if it's okay to invade the privacy of our neighbors. And there's nothing, the only way that I got this gentleman to stop was to file for a protection order. A civil case. But he's still there, he can still do whatever he wants, and there's, there just seems to be something wrong with this. That's all I ask for today.
Hey, John?
Thank you.
Stay there for a second, okay?
Yes, sir.
I've done some research on this too, as a result of the email you sent to me June 28th, which kind of informed a lot of us about what was going on.
Right.
House State Bar Association's got a, like a white paper on, on drones, and, and the cities, cities can do certain things. They can prohibit advertising by drones, which could become a mess at some point in time. States can require drone users to have insurance. It might add a level of responsibility, which might have the right people use drones and the wrong people not use drones. State laws in certain states can prohibit voyeurism, stalking, and harassment regarding drone operations. Now, I haven't looked in the state of Ohio exactly on that, but there could possibly be a state law in Ohio, which might be...
I'm under the impression there is nothing. They established a, a committee to look into it.
And if the city ordinance can do it, we will take a look at that, I promise you that, because I know, I could not imagine what you've been going through. Another neighbor of yours is going through the same thing. Who I talked to?
There's, there's at least several on Ross Avenue, there's several on G Street, there's several on Franklin. And, I mean, I've, I've watched this drone chase a young woman down the street, just flying right above her. She's aware of it, and she doesn't know what's going on.
Well, I promise you, we will look into it. I know that cities and counties in the state of Ohio, including Cincinnati and, but our metro parks, are not allowing drones over their airspace of their parks.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, there's, I believe, some creative way that we can do something, it will be looked into.
There's many legal uses, it's just that, well, this is not particularly a, and that my concern was not that, that I couldn't stop this gentleman by using civil court, that we call the police, and they can, they can see it, they can look at it, they can't do a thing about it. And that's the problem I have.
Well, I promise you, it'll be looked into.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, yes.
First, I drive by your house, 615 Ross, all the time. It's a beautiful, well-kept home, so thank you for that. I just did a quick search. I can work with Letitia and bring something back. We'll try for two weeks. It may be, I'm not sure how fast we can do this research, but from what I'm reading, there's been a lot of localities in 31 states that have enacted drone rules just in recent years. The most common local restrictions include prohibitions against flying drones over public property and private property without the property owner's consent. It does say, a number of these rules may, they may to contravene federal authority and could result in a legal conflict. That's where I think we need to do a little legal research. But I've heard this from at least five other people, I would say, in the last two to three years, that this is an issue. I think that we can bring back, at, at the very least, a, a starting point for what an ordinance could look like. Now, the tricky part, I'm sure Director Scormesi would say this, is going to be, how do we Now, the tricky part, I'm sure Director Scormesi would say this, is gonna be, how do we enforce it? But we can, we'll, we'll do our best to work through that.
I think, I think the threat of a, so, of a criminal pen, penalty will make people think about what they're doing. It's not, um, he's just, you know, up until very recently, he was just free to do whatever he wanted under the guise that the FAA doesn't, you know, do anything about it.
If state law doesn't cover it, city can do an ordinance. And you're right, several counties and cities do have, stay out of my park. You can take a video of it in your yard. I mean, I mean, I know your, your situation is awful, but we will definitely look into it. I'll give these folks in law and the city manager what I, what research I've done. But, um, I truly believe, I do believe, in fact, I know we'll be able to come up with something.
I appreciate it. And, and this was, this was, it, it's not just me. I mean, it is the, the neighborhood in general.
Mr. Mayor, is, is there any advice we can give him? He's actually, he's actually has taken some advice from some individuals, including his daughter, who I think is an attorney.
Yeah.
He got a civil protection order through Butler County Common Police Court. So if this happens again tonight from, from another individual, what does he do? There's precedent already set in Butler County Common Police Court that this is civil protection order, uh, activity.
If it, and, and I think what you're saying is, is if someone else flies a drone above my house, I can't do a thing about it, is what I, I believe. Is there, is there, uh, relief through the civil courts? Sure. But I don't know if you've, I, I just went through a protection order, and, uh, I have to sit there. I had to sit in front of the judge with the gentleman right next to me. And, and in this particular case, uh, smirking and actually laughed during the court, uh, appearance. And, uh, it's very difficult to have to do that. I mean, I, I, I had twenty-six photos and, uh, and keep in mind, this is not the only thing he's doing. There's other menacing things that he was doing. And, uh, twelve videos, so. But if he had his friend fly the drone in the neighborhood, we wouldn't know who the owner is, and we wouldn't know what's going on.
Mr. Mayor.
Please. I, I can't thank you enough. In my years of service, it's the first time I've heard of this scenario. But I can't thank you enough for bringing it to us, for all of the work you've done. I'm sorry you've had to do those things to protect your family. And it's unconscionable to think this goes on, but you've heard tonight from our city manager, legal department and, and things of what we might be able to do soon that'll help aid you and other citizens.
I appreciate that. I truly do. In the past few weeks, the, the police department and the city, um, truly have stepped up. There is nothing, if they could do it, they did it. There was nothing about what's going on that there was a complaint about the city or the police department, especially the police department. Very wonderful people.
Thank you.
But I still have to live through it.
Right. Well, John, if, if he encourages somebody else to do it, that's a violation of that protection.
Well, yeah, that, that is true.
If he's found, if he, if you have a contempt charge against him.
Well, he does have a criminal penalty at this mo, moment as a contempt of court, of course.
Exactly right. And that's a different penalty than the civil. So we're gonna fix up something. Uh, we're gonna work on that.
I appreciate it. I truly do. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thanks for coming to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Waters Canelle. She is still out there with Charlotte?
You're coming in now?
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, fellow council members, administrators, and fellow citizens. Our comments will be very, very brief. First, we wish to express appreciation to the Health Department, who continues to support us during this pandemic. And in addition to that, to the Hamilton Police Department and Fire Department, who support the YWCA. My name is Wendy Waters Canelle, and I'm the CEO of the YWCA at 244 Dayton Street. My second comment is that I'm happy to introduce Ms. Charla Hale, who is our brand-new Director of Racial Justice.
Hello, everyone. My name is Charla Hale. I am the new Director of Racial Justice with the YWCA in Hamilton at 2, 244 Dayton Street in Hamilton, Ohio. And I just wanted to, one, uh, say hello to you all, um, again. My face is very familiar, hopefully, in the city of Hamilton as a, um, once city of Hamilton planning fellow under the wonderful Liz Hayden. Hi, Liz. And so just wanna say I'm very happy to be, um, back working proudly in Hamilton and excited to partner with you all on working towards racial justice in the city of Hamilton and the Butler County area.
Well, welcome, Charla. I saw your photo shoot today. You went photo shoot out in front of the YWCA. We had a good conversation at the Hamilton Police Department open house, so, uh, congratulations. Welcome again. And, uh, look forward to working with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Good to see you again, Charla.
Frank Downey. Frank's still out there?
Yeah. Yep, on his way. My name is Frank Downey. I live at 929 Borough in Lindenwald. I just wanted to share a very positive experience from last evening. I was invited with some other people. I don't know if it's proper to name them or not.
Sure, go ahead.
To tour the Peters Cartridge Plant, the, from the owners of the company that are going to hopefully develop the Schuler-Benninghoffen former woolen mill. Mike Holcomb was with us, the superintendent from, uh, of our schools. Uh, Lawrence Sprague, a member of the school board. Mayor Muller was with us, Vice Mayor Pullman, and Councilwoman Susan Vaughn was with us, as was Brandon Sarver, Department of, head of the Department of Neighborhoods. We witnessed a transformation on a seventy-five-year-old building that when these people took it over, it had been empty for seventy-five years. It absolutely had no roof. And, um, the transformation, the physical transformation of this meeting was just, was, or this building was just unbelievable. And I've gotta believe that it's possible to do the same thing with the Schuler-Benninghoffen Mill. But even more importantly than the building, I believe there can be a change in Lindenwald and the city in general, in the feeling of community that such a change can bring about. I envision a many of our vacant and underutilized storefronts full of life again, bustling with activity, shopping going on. Liz Hayden, many, many years ago, she may have even been a, just been a city fellow when she said it. She believes that a revitalized Lindenwald can bring people from Fairfield and northern Cincinnati community shopping with us instead of those of us who live in southern Lindenwald, uh, going, going to Fairfield for our opportunities. I know there is an issue with the matter of money, but I believe when you undertake such a development, there's always gonna be a risk. Under the current administration and its past record for the last ten or twelve years, I believe any challenge can be overcome, and I believe, uh, the current city administration, city council, is definitely up to the task. Meeting with Ken Schoen and Steve Bloomfield of, uh, Bloomfield Schoen Developers left me even more convinced. They're not young gentlemen. They don't really, I don't, I'm sure they don't have to continue to do what they're doing from a monetary standpoint. But we had dinner with them and, uh, and talking to them. They're more inter, they're, are as interested in building community as they are in rehabbing a building. They just thought that was very, very important. Uh, they're generally interested in the welfare of Hamilton residents and in particular, the residents of Lindenwald. They, they asked us probably more questions about Lindenwald and Hamilton residents than we asked them about the buildings. I know Susan was engaged in this conversation with Steve, and he, he even got me afterwards. He wanted minutes from some of our protocol meetings, just to see exactly what it is we're doing, how we do it, and kind of get a feel for the community. I sent them to him this morning and had an immediate reply of thank you back. I know over the past week or so, I've sent most of you emails, and you've been bombarded by email and, uh, communications from other Lindenwald residents, that we're very passionate about this, uh, building and what we think it can do to our community. So, uh, just one last plea to, I'm hoping we can act on this opportunity, and, uh, we'll eventually overcome all the hurdles and move forward. The thing I like most about opportunity is a quote from Albert Einstein, and it's one of my favorites of all time. "Opportunity is missed by most because it shows up dressed in overalls and looks like work." I hope we don't become a victim of that. I'm sure the transformation this investment will have in Lindenwald and the ripple effects throughout Hamilton will be well worth it. Keep in mind that Lindenwald is the southern route into our community. There are several other things going on, which I'm not real sure how much we can talk about them yet, but, uh, it, it could sure be a major transformation, a beautiful way to come into Hamilton from the southern edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
For all you two do.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe it's appropriate at this time, um, I think I said this earlier, but just to reiterate that last council meeting, we talked about Schuler-Benninghoffen. It was on our caucus agenda. The reason it is not on the agenda tonight for consideration is we have not received the development agreement that we have sent to their attorneys back yet. So I'm hopeful that, uh, you will see it, uh, two weeks from this evening on, as a first reading item, but that's why it's not on tonight's agenda.
I can tell you Frank described things, I think, very well, how excited they were to have us visit them, share with them about Lindenwald, and, um, it really was almost, it was truly just nonstop, three hours probably of conversation about the project, what it could be. If Dick Shide is out there?
Good evening.
Good evening. Got it. Esteemed Mayor, honorable council members, and citizens of Hamilton. My name is Richard Shide. I was born and raised in Hamilton. I'm a twenty-four-year resident of Lindenwald. I want to speak to you about the Schuler-Benninghoffen Woolen Mill Complex. In eighteen fifty-five, the sleepy little village of Lindenwald, the population was listed as eighty souls, consisting mostly of farmers and some businessmen and their families. The businessmen commuted by rail to Hamilton or to Cincinnati. The transformation to a booming industrial and residential community was largely due to the efforts of the Schuler, Milliken, and Benninghoffen families. Speaking of Benninghoffen, I hope you guys all got the Benninghoffen booklet, and I hope that adds a little personal touch about the people who took the chance to build a large building in Lindenwald when it was out in the sticks. The woolen mill was moved from the hydraulic canal in Hamilton to its present location in eighteen ninety-three. Additions through the years resulted in the square block complex of today. The historic mill grew up alongside Lindenwald as Lindenwald became the Sixth Ward of Hamilton in nineteen oh eight, as it was annexed, and also, uh, the most populous, um, neighborhood that it is today in the city. Can you imagine Hamilton City Center without the Butler County Courthouse? Can you imagine it without the Resler Building? Losing the mill through demolition and/or neglect would be the equivalent for our neighborhood, for Lindenwald. Bloomfield Schoen has rescued, restored, and repurposed similar historic structures, including the American Can Company in Cincinnati, Northside Area, the Ford Assembly Plant in Walnut Hills, and the Peters Cartridge Company Complex in Kings Mills, that Frank talked about. Their proposal to restore, repurpose the Schuler-Benninghoffen Mill Complex is the right project for our community. It is at the right time, and it's by the right developer. I urge you to support it and our Lindenwald community. And I also thank you for all the efforts in moving Hamilton forward that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Dick. That's Dick.
Dan Hancock is next.
Good evening, councilman. My name is Dan Hancock. I live at sixty-seven Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio. One of the things is, you've got microphones in front of you guys' faces. You don't pull them up there. You can't hear out there. That's one of the biggest complaints is, since you moved out there, the speaker system, uh, hate to say what the word is, sucks. You can't hear anything. And the TV screen, half the people can't see it because it's over here in a corner, faces straight ahead. If you're gonna leave it out there, you need to put it at a forty-five-degree angle so everybody can see it. And, uh, put a speaker system in front so it faces out towards people, so they can hear what you guys are saying. Because half the people that were up here, we didn't know what they were saying out there. And if you took a survey and asked everybody who was, could hear, nobody raised their hands. So, uh, you know, we'd like to know what's going on, you know?
Points, well taken.
And, uh, the other thing is, I wanna thank Rich for putting the signs up there on, uh, B Street there and that, because we had ten cars go down B Street. There was no sign. They get down there to Gordon, and there's no place to go, you know? They have to turn around. You ever see ten cars trying to pull around at the same time? It was a nightmare. So now that they got the signs up, and a lot of people are turning now, and, uh, making it a lot easier. The other thing is, is you're going up Portina there, heading north. Right before you get to Gordon, there's a sign saying detour, go down Gordon, you know? Well, Gordon's closed off, so you need to, uh, put a, uh, a thing over the sign there saying, you know, until you decide to make it a detour, because like I said, people go down there, and you can't get through. So, and the other thing is, you're going over D Street, and you get to Ray, and it's a nightmare. Your, your car shakes and bubbles and everything like that. They put a new water mains and gas and whatever and that. It looks like they just threw a blacktop down and rolled over it with a truck, because it's all bumpy and that. And they even, you know, going down Ray there, uh, they didn't even start working on the curbs or tearing it up and that. So it's not gonna be ready when the forty, seventy-five days are up for to reopen everything. So, you know, you need to start working on that till when you get down to the bottom of the hill. Hunter's all done. That, that looks nice now, what you got down there so far, but it's not connecting. And, you know, the other thing is, is when you're coming down Main Street, you still got a sign saying, do not block the intersection there for the firehouse. Well, you got three firemen sitting in the driveway, so the fire trucks can't get out, and they don't use that way anymore. They go out on Millville, and there's no sign on Millville saying, do not block the intersection. So, you know, when the traffic lights red and that, and you start backing up, you're backing up over where the fire trucks come out. Makes it hard for them to get out. So.
I've seen Rich take copious notes over there about, uh.
And I wanna thank Rich Net for having this, uh, guy call me today and, and, uh, let me know what was going on. I really appreciate that. It was, uh, really nice of you. So, but, and anyway, with the bathrooms here, I'm glad you got them back open again, because when you, two months ago, they were locked up, and you couldn't go to the bathroom around here. You know, you had to run across the street over to McDonald's and that. So, I'm glad that you got the bathrooms back open, because I've got, uh, urinary, uh, problems and that, and I have to go every, every half hour and that. So, I appreciate that. But like I said, your speaker system's out there. You really need to get them fixed and that. And, uh.
Well, well taken.
And, uh, when are you gonna start, uh, working on the rest of the, uh, bike trail there and that? I mean, you approved the money and all that, you know, and, uh, a lot of people love what you've got done already, and you already approved to do the next section, you know? It'd be nice if you had it done when you got Spooky Nook, uh, done, because the paper says it would be done, uh, next year, uh, early spring and that, so.
I'm not sure of the exact timeline, but we'll, we'll get that to you.
Yeah, so. Anyway, I thank you guys very much, and, uh, you have a good evening.
You too, Dan. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I address one thing with Mr. Hancock, please? So, so I, Aaron Huffer did call him today. I, I asked Aaron to make sure that he, uh, addressed the issues that, that you had brought up maybe about a month ago at our, at our last council meeting. The one issue in particular I asked Aaron to call you about, um, was we did talk to Hamilton Fire Department. Chief Eichelberger provided a, a written explanation why they wanted, uh, this, Station Twenty-four, where you brought up the issue on Millville and also on Main Street. They, he did agree with you that we should do some additional striping on the Millville side. He did want to retain the striping on the Main Street side, uh, even though, you're right, I mean, they are not using it as much as they had in the past. He believes that that could change quickly, and he says he did not want to take it out, then have to.
Put a, uh, uh, or, um, a garbage bag over it and until you decide to start using it again. And in the meantime, like I said, put another sign on Millville.
They are going to, uh, they did take your idea about Millville, and they are gonna make those improvements, so I do appreciate you providing those.
Dan, in Chief Eichelberger's letter to us, he explained, I'm over here. He explained that if there would be a door failure on the firehouse.
True.
If there would be a door failure, they would have to use that alternate exit, and then they could move the fire, they could move the firefighter's car if necessary. And that's why the, the firefighters are parked where they're parked right now, but only in an emergency. If the doors on the Millville failed, and there was an emergency, they had to get the trucks out, then they could move their personal cars out of the way.
But the trucks are facing towards Millville, so they had to back out of the.
And, and so they. And, and so they would, if they have to do so.
But still, until the meantime, like I said, until you decide to start using it again with the doors fail, you know, put a cover over, you know, in the meantime.
Well, importantly, the chief got back to all of us with a recommendation, and we certainly listened when you talked to us about a month ago, so...
And the other thing is on Eaton, when you got done putting the, fixing Eaton, which is really nice in that, you had a sign there, do not block Mark Avenue, you know, do not block the intersection. Well, when you got done, you didn't put the sign back up, you know.
We have a work order in to do that within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, appreciate that, because like I said, people go down through there and that, and they, they block the intersection, and you can't make a turn in on, on the mark there and that, and it's a nightmare. And then that third lane going up through there and that, there's nothing to tell people to stop there and that. There's no marking across the street, and people go on, straight on the head through there, you know. So you need to put a yellow line across here at the end there saying, you know, this is the end, you know.
Well, Rich was taking notes, and we're, we're being responsive.
But I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Dan. Rachel Sanders? She was here to talk about traffic and speed, I would expect, on Ross Avenue. That's what her address is. Christina, is she out there? Okay.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor, Council. I'm Christina Ladelandefeld. I live at 318 Ross Avenue. Many of my neighbors had to leave, and some of them couldn't make it tonight, and some of them are here because you live across the street from me. What I want to talk about was, we've had three accidents on Ross Avenue in the last two weeks. They've been significant. I've had an entire car get taken out from my own household. About Sunday morning, 9 o'clock, this past Sunday morning, was sitting in my backyard, heard a big crash. That was another three cars that got totaled. That's not including the car that was driving. Those were parked vehicles on Ross Avenue. The biggest one was a Thursday evening about two weeks ago, and I do want to give major credit to my neighbor, City Manager Joshua. In both instances, the Sunday evening one that affected my car and the one on Thursday evening, he was the first one on the scene. The one that happened, it sounded like an explosion, he was running down the street to the accident. There were three cars, I believe, that were involved. There was an Escalade that was parked in front of the house at C Street and Ross, and it was toppled over completely. The car that was involved in the crash, one of the cars that was involved, I think it took about two hours to remove the driver. From what I understand, that driver was not the one that caused the accident, it was actually people drag racing down Ross Avenue. It's 25 miles per hour on that street. I walk my dog every day on that street, mornings, sometimes the evening. We've got families, we've got the Miami School that's right there. We've got people with disabilities who are, that's their main mode of transportation, is the sidewalks. This is not a simple answer. I know that people have come to you with lots of different concerns just this evening. If it was a matter of a stop sign that was blocked by tree branches, it'd be simple. We could say, let's take care of this. I have been able to talk to several people in the city, including the Director of Safety here, so I appreciate that, and I know that this is an issue not just for Hamilton, but for around the state. So what I'm just asking is that we are able to give some attention to both Ross Avenue, which is what I see, and then also on Park Avenue. I do think that having those as one-way streets probably contributes to it, because even though there's parking on both sides, I think having two lanes that are single direction make a big difference versus cross traffic. So, just a few suggestions, I don't have the answers. I know that all of you, several of you I've talked to already are looking into it, so I much appreciate it. But many people in our neighborhood are really concerned, and especially with school starting up in about a week, we're going to have a lot more foot traffic. And just again, to make the point, it's been thousands of dollars of property damage, but thank God it has not been human damage at this point. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
Thanks.
And the folks on Ross Avenue have contacted me. One even said that he wants speed bumps, and that's quite a statement to jump to speed bumps. One mentioned, basically me, but it always slows me on Ross Avenue. There used to be a police car always parked at those two six families on Ross Avenue. Was it, I'm not sure if it's E or something like that, whatever street that is. That slowed me down every time, because I'd see a police car there. But, no, other folks on Ross Avenue, besides Rachel and Christina, have mentioned what's going on there.
I, I think, I've had some conversations with our engineering group, and I'm to the point now that you can no longer engineer based on former design standards, meaning if you put up a, a speed limit sign of 25 miles an hour, we already know that people are not going to observe that. You can put up stop signs. In my neighborhood, I observe multiple people, I would say, on a weekly basis, running stop signs at 20, 30 miles an hour. It's almost that, I hate to say this, I wish that we had red light cameras, because I think that would get people to actually stop at stop signs and red lights. I know that's not an option, but I think that we need to put everything on the table, speed humps that are not uniform, they have to be staggered, otherwise people can move around them at a high rate of speed. You have traffic circles, roundabouts, other things that could slow people down. I just, I know that the police department is stretched very thin, and running radar is, is very low on their priority list, just to do the, all the other higher priorities that are, are taking their attention on a daily basis, but we have to start doing something. And I don't, again, Christina's right, I don't know what that solution currently is, but we have to come up with, I think, a variety of things and start testing them in some areas. And she said this earlier, and it's one I happen to agree with, one-way streets are always known for speeding. Even when you park on the streets, it's just, it's easier to go faster on a one-way street. I think that we need to literally put everything on the table, neighborhood by neighborhood, start soliciting input from people that live there and see it on a daily basis, understand exactly what the concerns are, and put together customized plans based on neighborhoods, not on a one-size-fits-all across the entire city, but a plan for every neighborhood, because I, I, I hear this a lot.
Can we set up a meeting at Miami School, possibly, for Ross Avenue in an evening sometime, and just see if we can invite the residents, at least hear their stories, at least hear them out? That might be a good location for it, would be the Miami School.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize, you were saying?
No, no, I, I agree with that.
Okay, is Alfred Barron still out there?
No, he is not.
Okay. I got someone, Fortham Hospital, Hospital update, named Kevin, is that?
Oh, he was here earlier.
He was probably jumping back next to the sign. Okay. All right. That's all that I've got who have signed the book.
There are people in the lobby who are waiting for that to sign the book.
And probably proceed from there.
So I've got to sign the book, and nobody's signed any of the public hearing books at all?
Well, they had the better part of, of half an hour, and they had the opportunity to sign.
All right. Okay, that takes care of the audience of citizens. That is over for this evening. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes meeting minutes, staff reports, clock receiving file, council information, informational report for the June financial report, June investment report, and all citizens' informational reports as they are sent to us. We go to the committee of the whole, that allows us to talk about some of the caucus' agenda items of more informal nature. Is there motion for the regular meeting to be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing done. We now go to the committee of the whole at...
8:30.
The time is 8:30. Okay. Okay, so we go to the caucus agenda, the first four, liquor permits. Is that accurate, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure if you have anything to present on those, or any questions that council may have on the first four? Is there anything that you want to add about those liquor permits?
They were reviewed by the city administration, there are no objections.
Okay. That now brings us to Main Street, and the Main Street issue that we've already talked about, involving the commercial design standards, involving the parking spaces. And I have a question for Liz, if I could. If we wanted to contain, if we wanted to change, I'm sorry, I'm on a roll, talking so fast, you're not even up there yet. If we wanted to change in the conditions of approval, should they, should this be taken off of the caucus agenda and then put down for a, for an actual agenda meeting, second one in August possibly? Is that what, because we talked about, I think, what looked to be a condition of approval change, as far as maybe the number of parking spots within 500 feet being required. Is that something that was talked about, and I just dreamed that up?
So, let me ask a question of our law director. If council directed, I mean, we're just on caucus right now, if they directed when the legislation was brought back for a first reading, could they not just say that tonight, what they, what the requested amendments would be?
Yes, we can, we can say that tonight. Actually, I went back and talked to Planning Director Liz Hayden, since, even though we have changed our process where we just usually put conditional uses on caucus, we talked about just doing it the more traditional path, and we can do it like via the staff report and ordinance to start making those changes like we used to, since we have that variance that we still need to address. But whatever the pleasure of council, we can do it that way.
So we, just so I'm clear, can we do both readings then? I realize that typically it just goes to caucus and that's it, but if we're going to bring it back, how does that, does it just go back on caucus then?
What Liz and I were talking about is, since it has to, we have to do staff report and legislation, that we would just do a staff report, and in our ordinance, we would address those conditional change uses at the time. But we can do it a different way. We could also bring it back on caucus and just resolve the issues with the conditional use only via caucus, but we thought it would just be cleaner just to do it all with the staff report and legislation.
So do we pull it then?
Well, while the information is fresh, I mean, I think trying to get it done at the next meeting would be a nice thing to do. If we have heard enough, I mean, as to what we can do as far as increasing number of the vehicles, I mean, the parking spots within 500 feet, but, I mean, putting it back on the caucus agenda might get it done at the very next meeting. If that is, if the timeline is important for, for the businesses to know and for the development to know, we can get it done at the next caucus agenda, at the next meeting.
There, there were just, I just want to present these two items to council for your consideration. One, as a condition, I would like the developer to number all his spots...
Okay.
And assign each of his units to a spot or spots, so it's very clear where people are parking, number one. And number two, and Liz, this may already be on his site plan, so forgive me if it is, I would like to request on his site plan that he has dedicated area for people to, to drop off and deliver groceries, deliveries, whatever. So, to Karen's earlier point, that instead of someone trying to park on the street because it's closer to the building, that they have a, an identified parking or parking spaces in the back where people can pull up and park for 30 minutes, an hour to unload a car before they have to move it to their parking spot. I think that addresses a lot of what she brought up as her concerns earlier this evening.
Was there any discussion about increasing the minimum number that he had to have within 500 feet of the property? Was that, is that discussed, or did I not hear?
Well, I, so by our definition, when we measure, we measure from the edge of the property to the edge of the parking lot, which is what I think Liz presented tonight. When Karen said it was 500 feet, and I think Liz said it was 150 feet, I think that's where the discrepancy came. I'm personally okay with, in an urban setting, this is a lot of parking for an urban apartment project. I think this, I would, my opinion, I would leave that one alone. My only concern was that he hit a minimum number, which he has, so I, my opinion is, he's fine on that. I think as long as we address him assigning the parking spaces and providing a space for drop off, I think that eliminates a lot of the concerns.
Okay, so something we brought back to us at the August 25th meeting as a caucus agenda item, and if council does not pull it at that time, and if we all concur with the recommendation, that is, that's good, it's done then, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just saying, so we're clear, so we're just going to go ahead and remove that from the consent agenda for vote, and then we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
On the caucus agenda for, I guess, August 25th. That, is that a plan, that we can get all that done and get it done next?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Liz, is it something that we could see before the 25th, so that if we do have questions, we would be able to have them answered before a final formal, okay? That'd be great, thank you.
The sooner the Main Street folks can see the changes, the better.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just have one question, I don't know who can answer it. So, like at the Markham, there are fences around the lots. Will the lots associated with the Rossville flats have fencing?
So I asked that question. They aren't sure yet because of turning radiuses, the prox, but they're going to do a lot of things to, they're going to do whatever they, because parking starts so close to the sidewalk. There's just a lot of questions about safety and things, but they're, they're definitely going to control access in as many ways as they can for, and, and the onsite parking, I would say yes. But I'm, I, the question I had was for like the 30 North D parking, and that is a question we're not sure yet.
And, and Hamilton Police would not be policing those, right? I mean, you would put a sign that cars could be towed, or does that put more on our police officers?
No, because a lot, a lot of private properties will have those towing signs, and all, the property manager just has to call, and the towing company will take them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about number 11?
So we are pulling it?
When we get to the motion, I'll put, make that one of the accepted items, number 11, and then the rest of them will be addressed in the normal manner. Okay, number 12. Anything to present on number 12 at all?
Oh, that is the rezoning of the Stahlheber and Northwest Washington area, correct? Just really quick, we, I did want to, I know this is very long, but this was a big meeting where we have a lot of residents come, so I wanted to make sure I made you aware of this project. The city staff initiated a proposed rezoning for this area. It's a very unique area. You'll see the area in red and blue. The area in red is the area that motivated us to propose the rezoning, and it's because, you'll see on the next slide, it has a very peculiar, peculiar situation of zoning where there is multiple zoning districts on a single parcel, which is unusual. And people have, out there have been trying to re, like appraise their properties and having trouble doing that because it's such an unusual situation. So because of that, we wanted to do the more typical thing that you see in zoning, which is every parcel has one single zoning. So that's what really motivated us to do this. But we also decided to take advantage of the opportunity while we were out there to also propose a zoning, zoning designation for our city substation, because it currently does not have a zoning designation on it. And so we had a lot of residents come out trying to better understand the project. Ultimately, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there was much opposition to the zoning part of it, there was just concern, they thought that it was related to a, like development proposal, which it isn't. And then there were issues brought up at the Stahlheber and Carlisle intersection about traffic and some noise and some other things like that. So, the ultimate proposal here, we did wind up, as you see, sorry, going back to this one, you'll see the initiative did include some big parcels right behind Walmart that were ultimately taken out because they, the, it was the day before they got the letter in the mail, it had transferred to a new owner, and they asked if we could hold off and work with them on the new zoning. So that, that did get pulled, so you see, it got a smaller area, and old, and so we'll see that come to us in the next year or two as we work with the new owner. But the proposed rezoning in the area is single-family residential, RPD and R1, depending on the size of the lot, and then business plan development for the substation.
Okay.
That's the summation of my report.
Page 13, vacating a portion of Magnolia.
This is just a map showing the vacation of Magnolia Street, which is, IRG is the owner on both sides, and they have requested this vacation.
14 involves vacating, vacating a portion of House 4th Street Alley.
Yes, shown up here on the map, and it was requested by a neighbor. It's a city-initiated vacation of what we call a paper alley. It doesn't, if you were out there, it just would look like part of their, part of everybody's yard, and they requested the vacation, and since we're not using it, we moved forward with it.
15, 327 Main Street.
yard, and they requested the vacation, and since we're not using it, we moved forward with it.
15, 327 Main Street.
That's the martial arts.
That's not related to Liz, but that's a topic that's been heavily vetted tonight, unless if council has any more questions.
Right.
I just have one question, perhaps. Is the building going to be torn down? The martial arts building?
So we have not fully evaluated that. I, I do know that in the Main Street businesses I have spoken to, they prefer it to be torn down so it yields additional parking spaces. Back to my earlier concerns, I do get concerned when we start tearing down buildings, especially mid-block. So we're going to work through the traffic engineers, come up with a best-case scenario if the building stays in terms of parking, parking spots, and a best-case scenario if it comes down, present those to city council, and at that point, we'll make that determination.
Thanks.
Good question. Other questions about 15? We'll go to, over the Beltline Phase 3.
Unless if council has any objections to accepting money, I think we should, we don't have to go much further with that.
Okay. Accepting a grant, which is a good thing. All right, that takes care of all of caucus agenda items and the committee, the whole is our motion. Let's committee the whole be closed. So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Nab. Second, and by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, committee the whole is closed at 8:42. I'll set the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved.
Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by vice mayor Pullman. Roll call vote on that, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
I'll set the motion that, with the exception of item number 11, that council received reports of consent agenda and concurrent recommendations. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Ryan, seconded by council member Vaughn. That was accurately done, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And my law director. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none. That motion is carried. We now go to the public hearings, and I'll set the motion at the regular meeting be recessed, and the four public hearings take place. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by vice mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none. It is 8:43. We go to agenda item number 17.
Hearing regarding adopting the tax budget of the City of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year 2022.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the tax budget? Anyone in council wish to comment or make a motion? And for the record, nobody did sign the public speaking vote for the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none. That public hearing is closed at 8:44. We go to now a public hearing, which is agenda item number 18. Can I read that into the record, please?
A public hearing regarding amending certain sections of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 related to minor clarifications and revisions to said zoning ordinance.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the minor clarifications and revisions to the zoning ordinance? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard about this particular public hearing involving minor clarifications and revisions to the zoning ordinance? Anyone in council wish to comment or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice mayor Pullman?
I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion made by vice mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. Closed at 8:45. We now go to the third public hearing, agenda item number 19.
Hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance number 7503 related to school uses.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing? The amendments to zoning ordinances involving school uses. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard? Anyone in council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Fear?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by council member Vaughn. I just want to make sure that everybody knows Hamilton City School District does support this particular amendment to the zoning ordinance. So we got a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. That hearing is closed at 8:45. We now go to the fourth public hearing, please, number 20.
Hearing regarding the Ross-Hamilton Joint Economic Development District, the JED, which will include 15 parcels within the JED boundaries for the purposes of facilitating economic development to create jobs and employment opportunities.
For the record, no one signed the third public hearing, or the second public hearings signing book, and nobody has signed number 19's public hearing book. So we now go to number 20, which has already been read into the record. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the Ross Township Hamilton JED district?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I do have a small presentation with some mapping if council desires.
That'd be great. I would say it's very important that we get the information out correctly about this particular matter.
Can you go to the, the first map, please? Sorry. So this is presented with the materials that's been forward to city council. It was hard for me to understand exactly where this was, so if you go to the second map, ours is probably not entirely accurate in terms of exact descriptions, but it, it gives you some wayfinding points. You can see Ross High School in the upper center part of that. You can also see when you cross over 27, that to the left, it's to the south of that very large farm area, it's just a, a small couple parcels. To the south middle part of that diagram, that is a proposed wastewater treatment facility for Ross Township, it's down by the river, the Great Miami River. So I just want to give council some perspective where this proposed joint economic development district was going to be located in Ross. Just for some background, Ross Township approached the city probably two to three years ago and, and started the conversation of doing with the City of Hamilton. At the time, they said it was because of Spooky Note coming, but I think Sensen, I'm sure they have some other development ideas also. But this JED is a little bit different than the JED that we have done with Fairfield Township where we have three JEDs. In particular, the, the breakdown of tax revenue is much different. It's 95% Ross Township, 5% City of Hamilton. The reason it is so much smaller than a JED that we have with Fairfield Township is they're not asking for anything. As an example, in JED 3, which was the most recent JED that we did with Fairfield Township, it was a 50-50 JED, but the city retained planning responsibilities, economic development responsibilities, and some other responsibilities pursuant to the approved agreement. The agreement that's in front of you is really pretty straightforward, they just want to partner with the city in terms of the JED. And the two things I think are the most important, obviously the 5% is nominal in terms of revenue going forward. The most important thing in the agreement is section 21, which speaks to the Hamilton Community Authority. The copy that, that we received, and I've already had a conversation with Ross Township and their attorney, is that it said that the, the Hamilton Community Authority language would go away essentially in 15 years, which is, is not acceptable to us. The reason it's such a low 95.5 JED was primarily because there is a revenue component with having the Hamilton Community Authority, especially if they build hotels, because the hotels will be required to be a, a member of the HCA, which goes into a, a parking fund to help pave the parking or keep the parking lots, not only built but also maintained. So I think that we'll, we'll get that corrected when you actually vote on that, but if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer it, but those two are the two primary financial components to this JED.
Just to make it clear, Hamilton City Council does not vote on Ross Township zoning issues.
We do not.
That's, I knew we didn't, but there was, I think, some fear out there that we could somehow change their zoning.
Right, we have, we have nothing to do with the zoning, we have nothing to do with the future land use, I mean, that's entirely within their purview.
Yep. Okay. Now, anyone else in the audience wish, wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the Ross Township Hamilton JED? Anyone in council wish to make a comment or motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice mayor Pullman?
I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. This public hearing is closed at 8:50. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Ryan, seconded by council member Vaughn. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll set the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Nab?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to pending legislation, agenda item number 21, second reading of an ordinance involving Lindell Wall Connectivity Plan.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, adding the Lindell Wall Connectivity Plan to the plan, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor?
Fear?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by council member Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Now go to agenda item number 22, which is second reading of an ordinance involving a new classification, natural gas department.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-3-11, adopted March 10th, 2021, as amended from time to time by adding the new classification of the natural gas compliance manager, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by council member Vaughn, seconded by vice mayor Pullman. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
And we go to agenda item number 23, second reading of an ordinance involving natural gas service.
Amending section 94, 947.10, services, service fees of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to natural gas service, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member, the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Vaughn. Discussion or comment on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Second. Motion made by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Ryan. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
And we go to agenda item number 26, second reading of emergency ordinance involving 128 South 5th Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 316 South 5th Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, parcel number P6441028000011, Trinity Fellowship Outreach property owner, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Ryan. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
And item number 26, second reading of emergency ordinance involving 128 South C Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances and related actions to Fergus Properties LLC regarding 128 South C Street, Fergus Properties LLC applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion made by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
And item number 27, second reading of emergency ordinance involving sidewalks and driveway aprons.
An emergency ordinance levying special assessments for public improvements in accordance with resolution number R2020-210, adopted February 26, 2020, relative to the construction and repair of existing sidewalks and driveway aprons on various streets and avenues in the City of Hamilton, Ohio. Final assessment rolled for the 2019 street resurfacing and concrete repair program, second reading.
Mr. Mayor? I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Ryan. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Okay, we go to new legislation, agenda item number 28, first reading of an ordinance involving some pay ranges.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification cap, excuse me, classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2020-1-6, adopted January 15th, 2020, to reassign the pay ranges for the gas and water distribution superintendent, assistant gas and water distribution superintendent
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
Okay, we go to new legislation, agenda item number twenty-eight, first reading of an ordinance involving some pay ranges.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city of, city's classification can't cap, excuse me, classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number twenty, E O R twenty twenty hyphen one hyphen six, adopted January fifteenth, twenty twenty, to reassign the pay ranges for the gas and water distribution superintendent, assistant gas and water distribution superintendent and tenant, and the gas and water distribution supervisor, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number twenty, first reading ordinance involving zoning and school uses.
Amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance number seven five zero three related to school uses, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number thirty, first reading of an ordinance involving some parking regulations.
Establishing restricted parking spaces and special places for parking for the handicapped and repealing certain other traffic regulations, first reading.
Go to agenda item number thirty-one, first reading of an ordinance involving some minor clarifications or revisions to the zoning ordinance.
An ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number seven five zero three related to minor classifications and revisions to said zoning ordinance, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirty-two, first reading of an ordinance involving community authority.
Appointing members of the, of the board of trustees of the Hamilton Community Authority, first reading.
Thirty-three, first reading of an ordinance involving Flying Ace Express.
In the replat of seven oh two Northwest Washington Boulevard, part lot number three zero three seven eight crossings at Gunn Eden Shopping Center to split an outlot for proposed car wash as seven two four Northwest Washington Boulevard Flying Ace Express Car Wash LLC applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Number thirty-four, first reading of an ordinance involving preliminary and final plat for Gardner Ridge Section Three.
Proving the preliminary and final plat for Gardner Ridge Section Three consisting of sixteen point three acres of the enclave at Twin Run Subdivision situated in the first ward north side of the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, J A Development LLC applicant, first reading.
Agenda item number thirty-five, first reading of an ordinance involving Great Miami Brewing Incorporated.
Approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to Great Miami Brewing Incorporated, five one four Maple Avenue, first reading.
Now go to agenda item number thirty-six, emergency ordinance, two readings involving eight oh seven North B Street.
The ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at eight oh seven North B Street, Hamilton, Ohio, four five zero one three, Paul and Sons Towing Incorporated, property owner at City of Hamilton applicant, that's the first reading.
Mr. Mayor. Take a motion that the rules be suspended and set emergency ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
And we go to second reading of that emergency ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at eight oh seven North B Street, Hamilton, Ohio, four five zero one three, Paul and Sons Towing Incorporated, property owner, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Vice mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
Now go to agenda item number thirty-seven, which is two readings of emergency ordinance involving Seven Gordon Avenue.
Emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at Seven Gordon Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, four five zero one three, Kevin L. Woods, property owner, City of Hamilton applicant, and that's the first reading.
Mr. Mayor. I move the rules be suspended and set ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
And go second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency. Authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at Seven Gordon Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, four five zero one three, Kevin L. Woods, property owner, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Fear. Any comments or questions about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
We now go to the first reading of number thirty-eight, emergency ordinance involving Community Improvement Corporation.
Emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio for public purposes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number thirty-nine, two reads of emergency ordinance involving an emergency preparedness grant program.
An emergency ordinance accepting additional funds awarded to the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program in the total amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to receive said funds, that's the first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the rules be suspended and set emergency ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by vice mayor Pullman. Roll call vote, please on that motion.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Okay, so the second reading, please, of that emergency.
Emergency ordinance accepting the additional funds awarded on the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program in the total amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to receive said funds, and that's the second reading.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by vice mayor Pullman. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number forty, which is a resolution involving the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and the National Opioid Settlement.
A resolution accepting the material items of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute and law director to approve the participation agreement for the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement.
Mayor. Vice mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Nab. Any discussion or comment on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
And we go to the forty-one, which is a resolution involving a management agreement in Booker T. Washington Community Center.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a management agreement with the Great Miami Valley YMCA relative to the Booker T. Washington Community Center.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice mayor, excuse me, councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion by councilmember Fear, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call on that, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Abstain.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
See, that resolution is adopted, five to zero and one, and step, abstention.
Go to agenda item number forty-two, resolution involving Storybook Trails Grant Program.
A resolution authorizing and supporting the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, O D N R, Storybook Trails Grant Program relative to the establishment of a storybook trail along the Hamilton Belt Line.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion on this one? I believe this is through the Land Public Library and their involvement, making a really neat program on our belt line. So, roll call vote if there's any other discussion.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number forty-three, which is a resolution involving the tax budget for twenty twenty-two.
Amending the tax budget for the City of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Ryan. There's no discussion or comment on that one? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number forty-four, which is a resolution involving Hamilton Parks Conservancy.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an amendment to the management agreement and associated license agreement and employment loan, loaning ma, uh, excuse me, employee loaning agreement with the Hamilton Parks Conservancy relative to the management of certain city owned parks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Fear, second by councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Agenda item number forty-five, resolution involving the board of trustees of Ham.
A resolution authorizing the director of business services to represent the City of Hamilton as a member of the Board of Trustees of the American Municipal Power Incorporated.
Vice mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion on this one? None, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Thank you. We now go to a special presentation, I believe, by Rich Engel involving CSX Train Depot. Mr. Engel.
Good evening again, Mayor, council citizens of Hamilton. Last week, we had our pre-bid meeting with potential bidders for the relocation of the two buildings associated with the Train Depot, and after discussing that with them, we found that we have two options that we can pursue with relocating the structures. Uh, relocate both structures with raising them beginning at ground level, which means the successful mover, the successful bidder who we award the contract to, will then have to excavate around the perimeter of the building. Let me get my notes here so I don't have to look at the... You'd have to excavate around the entire perimeter of both buildings. It would include the removal of the floor slab in the single story building. You would have to excavate that floor slab as well for placement of the steel beams beneath the floor and would require disposal of the excavated material. And as you realize and you've visited the site, there's limited space to have this material disposed, so we'd have to work with them to move the material as they were excavating. This would be a more expensive process and it would take longer time to perform the work and would likely have more conflict with C S X and the trains that pass through that area. The other option to consider is to begin raising the structures from approximately three feet above ground level, which means they could essentially punch holes through the walls, put the steel beams through the walls, and then raise from there. This would result in no excavation, no removal of the floor slab in the single story building, no disposal of the excavated material. We believe it'd be a less expensive bid price. Work can be performed in a shorter time period, thus allowing less, realizing less conflict with C S X trains. However, would sacrifice that low, whatever that dimension is, whatever that height is, we would sacrifice the brick in that location. Took some photos recently that showed, and the, the one mover even commented how soft the brick was. So, this is a photo of one location on the wall, and this is another photo. So, it's our recommendation that council pass the resolution that would allow us to raise, beginning at the three feet, no, no higher than three feet above the ground level, thus realizing a lower cost for the city to relocate the structures, having it done in a, in a much faster timeframe. For your information, bids are being received tomorrow at two P M., and we are asking pricing on both options, so we will have better information after tomorrow. But we would like your resolution to guide us in how we proceed, so we can get moving quickly on this process to relocate the, the two buildings.
Mr. Mayor.
Or Fear.
Rich is, is digging, wasn't that, are they not doing it now?
They're not bidding, no. We have two potential bidders.
Why'd they not bid it?
They were unhappy that their bid price was, or that their pricing to do the work was public.
Mr. Mayor.
But from our, excuse me, but from our recommendation, we think due to the public scrutiny and all of the information that we've had, it would, it was a better process to do a public competitive bidding process.
Councilmember Nab.
Rich, any idea when they talked about boring holes, are those going to be every eighteen inches, every three feet? Any idea of what they thought they might have to do for, I'll call it the length of the building going one side and out the other?
The height in the building?
No, not the height, but how many, how many holes might they have, are they going to bore holes every eighteen inches to, to go through to be able to raise those buildings? Or would it be every three feet, four feet? Did they?
I did not get an indication of what that might look like.
Mr. Mayor.
But they will, but they will use the steel beams and then essentially construct other structural steel around the building to keep it sturdy, and then they'll raise from there.
Councilmember Pullman.
I don't see why we would vote on this tonight until we actually got the bids. I think we ought to table this, in my opinion, because we're definitely not going to know the bid. I, I hate to take away the, you know, three to four foot of the building. I don't think some of the people that try to save this building is going to like that either, in my opinion. And, you know, for us to be voting on which way to direct you on this tonight without a bid, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think, you know, I'd like to make a motion to table this. Till the twenty-fifth, is it going to be any different that we, if we wait till the twenty-fifth after we get the bids and we have more information on this?
We'll have the bids in hand. The only drawback that I see is that it's delaying the project another two weeks of moving forward.
Can we, can we do anything with, if we get the bids in, I mean, we're, we're trying to make a decision tonight on something we don't really know the cost on, and can we, can we do a quick meeting next week and, and decide this? I hate to keep having extra meetings, but I just don't, personally, I don't feel we should be bidding on this tonight.
Well, have it, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not voting on this tonight.
Or Fear.
Haven't we already put a cap on what we're spending?
I, I don't think we've formally put a cap. I know that right now council has voted six hundred thousand dollars to move the building, and what is left is the staff recommendation. If we move the building, I think it's incumbent upon us to improve the building, but that's still council's vote to take. That, that was decided that night not to vote on. Rich, with respect to the two different options here, do you have a ballpark idea? Is it saving five percent, fifteen percent, thirty percent? If you had to guess?
I would not even be able to guess, Joshua.
Okay, so in your conversations with these two movers, no one had a, had an idea. I, I got a couple of different thoughts. One, one thought is that you could say if, if council prefers to not damage the lower three feet of the building, you can make a motion saying something along the lines that as long as the price does not exceed twenty percent, just as an example of the, of the one, of the different option, then to proceed of the different option, then to proceed with that. If you really want to have the bids in hand, Rich, the second question I guess I have is probably more for you. Can't we start the foundation work in the interim? Or does that require us to know option one or option number two?
No, it'll be the same foundation design in either case. It's whether the new location and the new foundation has to be built up to where the ground level is or another three feet above that.
So if they, if, if the option was picked to remove the bottom three feet of brick, would they not replace that bottom three feet with new brick?
They would replace that.
They would, so you would have a concrete?
Up to the ground level and then brick above that.
Got it, okay.
Well, if we're going after tax credits, can you replace something like that?
It's a good question.
I mean, and are we concerned? I mean, are any of you concerned that the brick is deteriorating and that it's soft? We have somebody that's an expert at moving this, like the other guy was?
Well, based on my conversation with one of the movers, I think they were a much better firm to work with than the first one.
But did they have a specific recommendation? Does the soft brick provide some type of structural issue that we should be aware of? Or do they feel like either option would work in terms of moving it?
They believed either option would work. It's just that they had concern about the brick being soft. We may have to do some brick replacement anyway as part of the relocation.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So in the photo here, it looks like the base of a window. So if you take three feet off of the bottom, does that move the windows down closer to the ground?
No.
There, you can see a little bit of a ledge there.
Correct. Well, the building will sit back as it exists today at the same height. We'll just have to fill in between the concrete foundation and where the hole is with new brick.
Okay, so that would be brick and not concrete, like a house would be now with a new foundation?
No, we would fill it in with brick.
It would be brick, okay. And that would be an additional cost that this company isn't bidding on?
That is correct.
Okay.
And council, if I may, may, just for clarity, that's why I wondered how far apart the bores were going to be. If we suppose from that three feet level down, we lose this much space of brick, I can buy into that. What I can't buy into is lose the perimeter brick all the way around the building from three feet down and have that be altered between the concrete slab and I'll say the bottom of that window that, that I believe Carly pointed out or Susan.
Susan didn't. You may not have a choice.
Yeah, so that's why, Rich, that's why I wondered how far apart the bores were.
Yeah, no, no, it will not, the entire three feet of brick will not be removed around the entire perimeter. It'll just be where they need to put their steel beams through the walls.
Thank you.
That's, that's about clarification.
Thank you, that's what I needed to know.
All right, because I was thinking you're going to take all the bricks around, three foot around, okay, so just where they're putting the steel beams through, that'd have to be fill-in, and it could save some of the other bricks maybe as a fill-in for, again, your historic credits that you were talking about.
史书生 credits.
Yeah, so it's, all right, that makes a little bit more sense.
So is there only soft brick in certain spots?
I don't know, we've not evaluated the building that closely.
Okay.
Is there any way that we could vote with more knowledge and still start something between now and August 25th? I mean, at least start the process. If we can, I'd rather wait till August 25th and vote with knowledge, but also at the same time doing, doing something that maybe we can do.
Mr. Mayor, again, Rich, I have one question. Is with either one of these processes on the bids, are there any time to start that you're requiring, requiring that came?
We have a, we have a finish date of December 31.
To get it done by the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay. So both of them that are bidding on it know that?
Yes.
And that's, okay, great.
Yeah. I don't know how, if both bidders do bid and submit a bid, I don't know how long it's going to take them to mobilize and get their structural steel ready and get their move scheduled with the work they have going on now.
The bid just says you have to be done by December 31st?
Yes, correct.
House member Fear.
Since the city now owns this more or less, and we didn't have the opportunity to do any kind of engineer evaluation or like really studying this kind of stuff, would it be smart to try to do that now? And I'm just looking at you, I don't mean to be.
I understand.
Angry when I ask you these questions, but I am. So it just seems like, what I feared is that now we're finding out things that are really wrong with it now that we own it. So is there a way before we actually lift it up and move it that somebody can really come and tell you?
We had Coon Restoration go and look at that, but I don't think they were looking at it from a structural point of view, were they, Joshua?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
I think, were they not looking at it to do some interior demolition so they could, so they could help move the buildings quicker?
I believe that was it, yes.
Mr. Mayor. Vice mayor Pullman.
These people probably wouldn't bid on it if it wasn't sound. They would tell you they couldn't move it, wouldn't you think? If, if it wasn't sound, even though it has soft brick, I understand that that thing's three bricks thick in there.
Correct.
So the outer bricks may be soft, but they're going to, they may come back, if they looked at it good enough and they say they can't move it, they wouldn't bid on it. I mean, I think that's an evaluation, that's what I'm kind of watching. I mean, that's, I don't see why they wouldn't even think, yeah, you would think, but I would hope they would do that, so.
It sounds like there's, yeah, enough uncertainty that I would just recommend to what the vice mayor said, we just table it this evening, bring it back August 25th, and whoever has a low bid, if they're both low on both options, we could, they could even start the mobilization process before we decide on option one or number, option two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Their motion that we table 46, 47.
Second.
Motion to make it Vice mayor Pullman, Senate councilmember Nav. Be it a roll call vote on that or a voice vote? I'm not sure.
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that is 46 and 47 are tabled until the August 25th meeting. Okay, audience of city manager.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Audience of city council.
Mr. Mayor.
House member Nav.
With the length of our meeting tonight, and it's almost unprecedented of the time, but you look at all of the touch points that we visited tonight throughout the city, people and staffing and Beltways and YMCA's and, and all of the things we talked about, about quality of life, the impact of the financial contributions and things. So even though this was a marathon tonight of what we're accomplishing and things, I think we're doing good things for the city and hopefully the residents that are with us tonight and following us on TV Hamilton and streaming what have you, have the same understanding of what staff has prepared for tonight. Our council packets were 850 pages long this evening. Normally, they're 350 pages of pleasure reading for all of us to be able to be versed on what we're, what we're working on. So none of us take it lightly. We take the work of, of all of the administration, I mentioned that prior tonight, all the preparation that goes on and things like that very seriously and compliment all the work, the behind-the-scenes work that goes on to ready everything for us. So again, I think, I think we're doing good things. I call it good stuff in the City of Hamilton, so thank you.
Talking about things that are, I believe, worthy of doing. Plans are being made for a 9/11 commemoration, citywide moment of silence, proclamation, church bells tolling for those who were lost on that day as well as lost as a result of what happened on that day, as well as those who've lost in the field, their lives in the field of battle, and possibly having churches and businesses have commemoration notes on their signs recognizing the faith and the community support which, which got our entire country through that. I sent an email out yesterday, well, actually a pastor sent it out yesterday, and less probably 24 hours ago, and already four churches are involved, including a pastor who was involved there at Ground Zero. So stay tuned for more about that. I think we thought worthy of doing, and Hamilton will commemorate this in a special way. Anybody else on council, anything you want to say at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
House member Ryan.
Two things, two things real quick. High's Restaurant's celebrating their 75 years of business. Hopefully we can do something.
What date is that?
I think it's just this month. I don't know what the official date is, I just know it's 75 years ago this month, so hopefully we can do something special for them. Secondly, state representative Thomas Hall represents the 53rd district, which is Monroe, Oxford, and Middletown, and the northern townships and the western townships. He's submitted a house, a bill on the House floor, House Bill 361. It calls for increased fines on the railroads who illegally block railroad crossings. I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor and council, that we draft a resolution in hopes that we can support this legislation and support Representative Hall. This is legislation we've been waiting for, I feel, for a long time at a higher level. All of us know that we deal with this problem here, here in town, and I think it's absolutely imperative that we get behind this to bring some accountability to the railroads. It's a public safety issue here in Hamilton. It's affecting our businesses in Hamilton and our residents, so I'd like to get that.
Here's what I would suggest, I mean, the entire county, I think, suffers at times when there are train stoppages, including this one off Augsberger Road, which I think you could get much surrounded. What if we draft a resolution, but in the meantime, we circulate at least a summary of that particular House bill? Sure. We can do that? We can do that?
Yep.
All right, let's, let's just put a place mark on the August 25th council meeting, but let's circulate that House bill. Anything he may want to attach to that as his own statement?
Will do.
Okay, you'll take care of that?
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Quickly, I'd like to thank 17-strong Department of Neighborhoods. The city and the county worked together on Saturday to host a coffee with council, was very well attended in the East End. I think it was very beneficial. They talked about the five points roundabout, a lot of good questions. The next one will be September the 18th in Milliken Woods, so I hope a lot of folks will turn out.
It was a very, very good coffee with council, and I know Brandon Sarver got about four points to work, things that need to work with and with the residents and the city professionals. So, yeah, that was very well talked about, well attended, and we got things done, so.
Mr. Mayor. Please, just tailgating on what you both said, one of the residents on Eastview approached me when I was walking back to my car and pointed out an area of his road that had been repaired with a patch, just a once-over likely patch, and I spoke to Jim Williams in his department, and they were out yesterday to put a permanent seal patch down. So a lot of good things did come out of that Saturday morning, but nicely enough, again, the response of, of our city, the response of the community, there were probably about 30 people there, I would guess, that visited with us over coffee and things, so it was a good time. Susan, thanks for bringing up the one in Milliken Woods next, or in September, so.
And if you get a chance, in the subdivision, 76 Irene is an address. A lady is very proud of her house. We recognized her, I think, at a council meeting on 12 long ago, but drive past 76 Irene to see a well-kept house, flags in the front, flags in the back, and a bridge in the front. It's a, you can tell that lady loves her house, and well worth the drive, and she may come out in the way when you drive by.